I'll make the order.
May I ask Travis Scott to give the invocation?
Stand please. Heavenly Father, we come to you this day, Lord, to do business in our great town, Lord. We ask that you give us the wisdom and the proper thoughts, Lord, to make the correct decisions, to support this community and the people that live here, Lord, and those that work here. We have special blessings on those that can't attend tonight, that may be ill or sick, Lord, or have a family that needs help. We ask all this in Jesus' name.
Amen. I believe Silas, we're clear, we're 95. Stand up, come forward, please. If you'll lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Gentlemen, as you can see before you, you have an agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda you'd like to make right now? Addition or changes?
Ms. Ray, I think we have a couple here, is that correct? Madam Clerk. Business items, I'll make a motion that we add business items five, six, and seven. Don't need the seven, I'm sorry, okay? Just business items five and six to the agenda.
I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
I would like, I would like to substitute item number seven, instead of discussing the agreement and release, I would like to add the business item that we make a report to the citizens of this town, the status of what has become known as the pay raise scandal and the current posture of that.
I second that.
All right, is that a change, adding five, six, and seven as a report on the pay raise scandal? Will we ask for another motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion that will approve it. With the emery's change.
Second. Mr. Travis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. We're gonna have three public hearings tonight. And the first one we're gonna go into is one that does not require people to be sworn in. First public hearings will be about the community development block grant, CDBG. Who's be addressing that?
Ken Griffin will.
Ken, if you'll step up. The purpose of this public hearing is to announce the town's intent to apply for a small city's community development block grant to improve its water treatment plan. Ken, I'll let you address that.
Mr. Mayor, I think you've covered a lot of it already.
Well, I'm sorry, I need a, I need a, I need a motion.
That's fine.
I need a motion and a second to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Now you make the next speech.
As you know, we have a water plant that's in need of a fair amount of work, in particular our intake structure, it takes in a lot of sand. That causes us a number of very significant operational difficulties and very significant operational costs. Fortunately, we do have a good repair, a good fix in mind. You were good enough to authorize our engineers to conduct a preliminary engineering study. Our town manager was good enough to secure grant funding to make that study possible. That study's been completed and presented to you, the preliminary engineering report done by Wooton. There is a recommended alternative, alternative number one. The town manager has already spoken to you about possibility of applying for a community development block grant. The rules have changed a little bit, the process has changed a little bit, it's now with the department, now with DNR. And I think that we have a very good chance to compete, it will be highly competitive. If we pursue this direction, two public hearings are required. This is the first, and this one is an announcement, an announcement that's our intent to apply for that grant. There'll be a second public hearing next month, which will have more details in terms of our, the application and other submittals that we're required to make. So today is meeting that requirement of having the initial public hearing indicating our intent to apply.
Are there, are there any comments from anybody in the audience about this issue? Are there any questions from the council about this issue? I'd like to get a motion to close this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we're gonna be entering into two other public hearings. In these public hearings, you'll need to be stand and be sworn in if you want to speak about these issues. Two issues are the Nitro Solar Farm and Elizabeth Solar Farm. If anybody wants to speak, you can stand up in your chair right now and the clerk's gonna swear you in.
Do you solemn, please raise your right hand. If you're gonna speak for or against either one of the public hearings, you need to be sworn. Do you solemnly swear, do you solemnly affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Do.
All right, at this time, I need a motion to open the public hearing for CUP-1403 Nitro Solar Farm.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paul, if you'll present the information.
Let me orient you to the first hearing, which is the Nitro Solar Farm. This is US 70 east of Smithfield, this is the I-95 interchange, Mark's script, Belton Grove, it's the first road to the right. This is the building of the home park, the subject property is just about 800 feet beyond the rest of the home park. The level on the park is up here, this is the subject property, it's under consideration, and you have a copy of the site plan in your packet.
This is known, again, as the Nitro Solar Project Conditional Use Permit 1403. In the staff report, which is included in your packet, you will notice that it's on a, the total tract that's involved with is 87.37 acres, it will not take up that entire acreage. The zoning there is R-20A, which is residential agricultural, there is no zoning request associated with this and the existing use is currently residential and agricultural. The proposed project is a five-megawatt fixed-tilt polar-metric solar farm with electrical power inverters, electrical transformers, and buried conduit. The proposed facility will tie into Duke Energy Power Grid. This is unlike the other project that you approved out on Brogdon Road, which tied into our grid with the town. There are no known environmental issues associated with this project. All the adjacent property to the subject site is zoned R-20A. The staff analysis is there in your packet, and we find it to be, this area, according to the strategic growth plan of the town of Smithfield, is suitable for low-density residential and agricultural use. This project is consistent with the UDO, providing that a conditional use permit is issued by the town council. Utilities, which this is qualified as, are permitted uses in all zoning districts in the town of Smithfield with a conditional use permit. Compatibility with surrounding land uses, the existing and surrounding land uses are low-density residential and agricultural in nature, it is unlikely that negative impacts of existing and future surrounding uses will occur, providing the site is properly buffered in accordance with the UDO. Signing requirement for the property will be minimal. It is located in the Smithfield Fire District, it should have no impact on schools or parks and recreation due to the fact that there, there is no habitation on the site. Access to streets will be private drive back to Velvston Grove Road, which is the state S.R. Water and Sewer, which is needed on the site, will be provided by well and septic, and the electrical power provider is Duke Energy. The planning department made a recommendation for approval of the conditional use permit to the planning board, and at its May 1st meeting, the planning board unanimously voted to recommend approval of the conditional use permit to request, to allow for construction operation of the solar farm on the property, providing all proper buffers were enacted. The town council was requested to review the petition for a solar farm on the property located in the R-20A residential zoning district and make a decision in accordance with the finding of fact for conditional use permit. In your packet, you will find, starting on page 15, the finding of fact, you have four items there, you are requested to take each item into consideration for that. Also attached are your planning board minutes and actions there. You have the, the planning board minutes, we're a little bit late in coming out, the, we have not, they have not been approved, they're only in draft form now, but you have the basic information there in the report. We had a total of seven members of the planning board at that meeting. Ashley Spain reclusive herself from this case, and so it was actually voted on and passed unanimously as submitted. The site plan, you can't see too much up here, but this is Belton Grove Road, this darker outline, it's the property, the back part of it is predominantly woods, the southern part of the property is a fairly substantial wooden buffer on that side. The farm is located approximately 20 acres, more or less, in the middle part of the site. So with that being said, I think that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I stand up and for consideration.
All of that, left side of that map, in the middle is a rectangular there. What is in that? Is that, that's not part of, what is there?
It's a residential structure. It shows right here, there's a residential structure, appears a barn, and another accessory building out there.
What standards are there for buffers or other distances from existing residences or planted residential lots?
By zoning, we do have different buffers that are based on the zoning district. Since all of this zoning is R-20A, there basically is not a buffer required by that, but there is a buffer required for public utilities of minimum of 50 feet.
And that's 50 feet, whether it's from an adjoining cropland or adjoining residences, it doesn't matter, it's just 50 feet from the property line?
Yes.
I'm gonna interject here real quick. Is applicant here for this? Are you in agreement with the testimony offered by Mr. Ambler?
We are.
Do you have any additional information you'd like to present? Stand up.
My name is Sarah Hayward, I'm an attorney for Sunlight Partners. I'm from Tuggle Duggins in Greensboro. I have with me here Keith Colson, who is the program director at Sunlight, and he has some materials that he's gonna pass out for you today. So my job here is to make sure everything runs smoothly from our side, we have a number of people here with us to testify today. And once we all get your booklets, I'll let you know what you're looking at. So if you turn to the first tab, that is the site plan, you can pull it out, so it's a little bit easier to see, I understand the type is small. The second tab is the landscaping plan, and that'll help you with some of the buffer questions that I see you are already having. The third tab is information about Sunlight Partners. The fourth tab, it's just some general information about solar farms, there's some pictures of some solar panels. After the fifth tab, this is our expert, Tommy Cleveland, he is an engineer, and I'll introduce him in a second, but Tommy has an affidavit here because he may have to leave since his wife is expecting and she's a week overdue, so he, we weren't sure whether he'd make it tonight, so we're hoping that he can stick around. But this is Tommy's report, and his credentials are in the back, and we believe these will show that he's qualified to testify as an expert here for solar energy. After the sixth tab, this is our report by our appraiser, Rich Kirkland, and he is here today as well, and his CV is in the back. We think that he is qualified to testify as an expert here today. So like I said, first, we're gonna have Keith come up here, he's gonna give a little bit of background, and then Tommy's gonna talk about the solar farm. He is a licensed engineer from NC State, he is, works for their solar institute, and he is far more knowledgeable than I am, so he's gonna give you some more information on solar farms and tell you what you can expect. And like I said, Rick Kirkland is a licensed North Carolina appraiser, who has performed an appraisal for both sites today, we're gonna go one by one, and he has looked at all of the adjoining properties and determined that there will be no harm to these adjoining properties and abutting properties. And we also have the property owners here today as well, and we may have them speak, but I'd like to pass it on over to Keith.
Hi, I'm Keith Colson, I'm with Sunlight Partners. I'm the VP of Operations for Sunlight Partners. Sunlight Partners is an entity that works in the solar field, we're owned by a company called Kate Street Capital, they're a renewables energy firm, and they have different projects like biomass and water reclamation, thermogen pellets, torphide wood types of projects. And Sunlight Partners is owned 100% by them and where their solar arm.
I'm sorry, what was the name of that firm again?
Kate Street Capital.
Kate as in K-A?
C-A-T-E.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Nitro Solar, we think is a great solar site, I think once the, once you hear from our experts tonight, you'll agree that, that there's no environmental issues, there's, there's nothing that would, you know, harm the public safety, we believe there's, you know, no noise, no smell, no limited traffic, probably, you know, quite a bit less traffic than what's happening right now as a result of the solar activity. And for the sake of time, I'm not gonna go into a lengthy explanation because those guys will do a better job than me, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those at this time. Thank you.
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
When I look at that map, I'm concerned about that piece of property up to the left side of there that has a residential home on it. And I'm looking at the map down below, I would be concerned about this farm affecting the land value of that property, could you speak on that?
Yes, so two, two items to that, number one, our appraiser's gonna talk to you about that in detail, but number two, that is the landowner's house.
So the landowner is selling you this property?
We're leasing, leasing the property from the landowner.
Another question I have for you is, this parent company, are they actually gonna be the ones that are gonna be building, operating, and funding this project?
So, Sunlight Partners is, that's a complicated question, that's why I'm kinda hedging him here.
Let me ask a more detailed question. Are you going to seek funding, once, if we were to approve this, will you go out and try to find investors for this, or will you actually operate it, fund it, and manage it yourself?
We will, so in North Carolina, very few of the people who build solar farms actually own them, we will actually be involved in the operations and maintenance of the facilities, but in order to own the facility, there's different financial components of federal tax credit, state tax credit, depreciation, and then the energy output from it all, and it's a pretty complex financial equation, so that's, that's kinda how that goes. Typically, it'd be a large financial institution that would have the appetite for all those types of things.
To get the North Carolina tax credits, you have to earn income in North Carolina.
I understand.
Yeah, you'll have to find people doing it.
Yes, sir.
Sir, are there any, any comments from the people who are sworn to testify in the audience? Anybody wanna say anything? Any other questions from council?
For the record, are these two projects in any way related?
They are, they're owned by, they're both owned by Sunlight Partners, so we'll be speaking for both of them, but they're not related otherwise.
Is, will one of your experts be able to talk about the noise?
Yes, Tommy Cleveland can address some of that. Tommy, do you wanna come up here?
Good evening, my name's Tommy Cleveland. I'm an engineer with the North Carolina Solar Center at NC State University, at least that's my day job, I'm here tonight just as a private engineer to speak on behalf of Sunlight Partners about the, the technology that's going into this project, in this project specifically. My background is mechanical engineering, I've got an undergraduate and master's degree from NC State. Since graduating, I've been working at the Solar Center as a solar energy engineer for about 10 years now, working with this kind of technology. If you would slip to the, the fifth tab in your book, I've got a presentation I'll walk through to familiarize you a little bit with the technology and what's to expect at the site, and try to address concerns folks sometimes have about health and environmental safety concerns. There's a slide at the beginning after the opening about the Solar Center to tell you a little about who the Solar Center is. As I said, we're part of NC State, kind of a clearinghouse for information and unbiased information about, about solar and other clean energy in North Carolina.
So, so question, are you here tonight on behalf, in acting in capacity of the Solar Center?
I'm not yet, to be clear, I'm not, I'm here privately.
Okay.
But that was to explain, you know, my, my background and where my information is.
Right, just for the record, thank you.
And then the slide after that shows the, the components of the silicon-based panel, which are the type of panel or module that are going to this site. And you can see from this breakdown just what those components are, the vast majority of, of the material there is a glass front and aluminum frame, you know, very common construction materials. The part where all the action is, is a really thin layer of silicon-based material, and I'll show what else is in that in a slide. And then there's some other thin layers of plastic that encapsulate those cells from the environment, so they keep the cells dry, and they also means no air, no water on site ever touches those cells, they're sealed up in those thin layers of plastic for the life of the panels, and they're warranted for power production for 25 years. After 25 years, they're still warranted to produce at least 80, sometimes 85%, depending on the manufacturer, of their original power after that 25-year period. The next slide breaks down what the, what's in the cell, it's almost entirely silicon, which is a very benign element, very, a main ingredient in sand. There's also a tiny bit of phosphorus and boron, these are both common materials and non-toxic materials that are there in the cell. There's often concerns that there's toxic materials in the panels, the types of panels being used here don't have those toxic materials, there are other technologies that use cadmium or other heavy metals in that cell structure, but it's a different technology, and it's a much less common technology, they're using the more common, much more common silicon-based technology that doesn't include those heavy metals. And then in the upper left corner of that, you can see the inverter, that's the other large component of the farm. Basically, the working farm is all these panels generating electricity, DC electricity that's sent to a number of individual inverters, where that DC electricity is converted to AC electricity, using some, some power electronics that are not all at unlike you would have in a computer where you convert DC to AC electricity, or the other way around, in a, in a computer or in a little wall, wall socket, so some technologies that we see elsewhere in our, in our world. Then the last few slides will go a little quicker, they're, they're images of what these sites look like going in, these are photos from a different developer in North Carolina, but showing what, what a very common site would look like. You can see there's generally no grading required at the site, so the existing vegetation is there, assuming that it's, it hasn't just been cut. There's galvanized steel, galvanized steel pipes that are just driven, pile driven into the ground, so there's no concrete at the bottom each of these, there's driven in, so at the end of the life of the system, it's possible to, to pull all these back out. And then to the next slide, there's aluminum brackets that go on top of the, the vertical supports, and then the panels are bolted on top of that and wired together. And you can see on the right-hand edge of that, one of the platforms where an inverter goes, there's a, roughly a 10-foot by 10-foot concrete pad where those inverters sit, and there's a few of those around each site. And then an aerial, aerial view on the next page to show a site that Apple has built a data center a little bit further in the western part of the state, just to show an example of who else is building these farms in the state. There are now many similar-sized five-megawatt farms across North Carolina. And then finally, some conclusions, my point here today was to show what, what is at the site, and also show what's not at the site by showing what's there, there's, there's no batteries at the site, and there's no, as you can, as you can see in what I went through and what's there, no toxic materials in the components that do go into the site. There's no site emissions, these things are all sealed from the environment, so nothing is being released into the air or the soil or, or the water. There are local air benefits, clean air benefits, because there's less energy being generated by local power plants that are fossil fuel power plants. By making this solar energy, it means other power plants in the area produce less energy and burn less coal or natural gas. We've seen widespread support from environmental organizations to show that they are positive environmental projects. And a very local example, the EPA Building, Environmental Protection Agency, NRTP, has one of their large research centers there, and in 2002, 2010, and 2011, they've put new PV systems or photovoltaic systems on the roof of their buildings, right there where they have large workforce, showing they've got, they've got no concerns about putting the panels right above where their, their workers work, day in and day out. And there's been many decades, over 50 years of experience, field experience with this crystalline-silicon technology, so there's not gonna be surprises after this has been in the field a few years. That's my, my point.
Tommy, I just had one question for you. Did you come to any conclusion about whether the location and use of this solar farm would have any negative?
have any negative effect or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare?
Yeah, I can say, in my opinion, no, it would not. There's nothing about this site or anything around it that would at all endanger the local public health or endanger their safety.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How many of these projects have you have experience with building in other communities?
I haven't been out in the field actually building them, I've been out in the field and seen them, and I've taught classes on designing them, but I haven't actually been there constructing them, if that's what you mean by building them.
Are you, based on your experience, do you have any other ones that are set up currently that are functioning, that you've had a part in or familiar with? The reason I ask the question, my next question is, has the residential customers that neighbor those areas had any complaints that you're aware of?
I personally haven't been close enough to those sites after any of them been built to be able to say either way.
And if I may, that may be a question that Keith can answer more easily as to other solar farms that are in North Carolina, so it's maybe easier for us to have all of our experts testify, and then you can ask questions after directed at all the experts, maybe they could answer some of the questions that you have.
But in this case, there's only one residence, maybe that one's a fact, correct?
Rick Kirkland did the real estate appraisal, or he looked at all of that, so he can testify to that for you.
So, Tommy, question for you. As far as public health and safety, I'm sure there've been studies done, but you being an engineer, you can probably help me out here a little bit as far as the rating, winds' rating and so forth on the solar panels and how they're constructed. Have there been any tests done, how they're currently constructed?
Yes, they do have load testing that is heard on the panels, and the panels are tempered glass up front, so there is a UL 1703 standard that applies to the panels, and National Electric Code requires any panels that are installed to be tested and certified to that standard, and that's a safety standard, and one aspect of that standard is their test to some loading tests, some physical loading tests. And then locally, there's a wind speed rating that the mounting has to pass, so they'll be engineered, the combination of panels and the racking and the way they're in the grounds will be verified to meet the wind loading requirements for any construction.
So, do you know what that is at present?
I don't know for this site, I believe it's 90 miles an hour, but I have not done the engineering study on this project.
Okay.
But that is a requirement, it will have to verify that it has passed.
And how is that determined as far as the wind, the loading?
Generally, it comes from the manufacturer of the racking who does their own wind tunnel testing, and they do testing, do the engineering, and they'll supply the engineering report to say, when you install the racking in this way, in that place, with that panel, you have this wind rating.
Good evening, hi, my name's Rich Kirkland. I'm a commercial appraiser, certified general in North Carolina, MAI appraiser, Q Quay Barina, I've been appraising for about 18 years now. I regularly appraise land, subdivision land, farms, and things of that nature. I was hired by Sunlight to address the question about impacts on property values and whether or not the proposed solar farm will have any impact on adjoining properties. To do this, I've spoken with other MAIs, I've looked through the Appraisal Institute, I'm looking for national studies, and really, there were not a lot to find, so I had to go out and do my own. The textbook way you look for proximity damage or damage due to adjoining uses is what they call a matched pair analysis or paired sales analysis. That's where you find two sales that are essentially identical, except for one difference, and that's what you're testing for. In this case, I'm looking for a property that's right next to a solar farm and another one that's not, and the only difference being the solar farm. Goldsboro, I looked at a solar farm out there, the AM Best Solar Farm, joins a new subdivision or a new phase of a subdivision that's going in out there in Spring Gardens. It provides a really good set of, really textbook matched pairs, a great series of them actually. There's new homes being constructed that back up to the solar farm. There are homes that have sold before the solar farm were announced, there are homes that have sold since the solar farm's been constructed. There are homes that have been sold in the neighborhood but not backing up to the solar farm down the street after the solar farm was built. All these homes are selling for the same price for the same floor plans, they're selling for the same price per square foot, it doesn't matter whether it backs up to the solar farm or if it's down the street, it doesn't matter if it's sold before the solar farm was announced. I spoke with a developer, he said that they had no concern for the solar farm when they were putting it in. I spoke with brokers, they had no concerns with it. And then I walked down the street one day and I knocked on the doors while people had homes that backed up to the solar farm, and I talked with as many of them as I could, and I spoke with five different homeowners, and they said that really there was no concern with it. Some were aware of what was coming in when they bought, some weren't, but even those who weren't said that it really wasn't a factor for them. There's pictures in my report that's in there, you can see solar panels from their backyards, these homes. They are screened, they're not perfectly screened, but they're partially screened, and there are trees back there that are, over time, were drobed where they won't be able to see that. I also looked at another solar farm that was, well, it's been approved but it's not been built in Zebulon. This one, I looked at a collection of lot sales that sold right across the street and joins and has lots that face this approved solar farm, has been built, but this collection of lots were already approved, and they got caught in the recession, and along with a lot of subdivisions in the Zebulon area, they were just sitting there vacant, and they rapidly started dating the homes in the subdivision. So, but I looked at that bulk sale analysis, the bulk sale, those lots sold, very similar, in fact, slightly higher than the other two sales lots that I looked at in that area. Discounts for multiple lots to one builder is very common right now in this world of cities. I also looked at another solar farm in Chapel Hill, White Cross Road. That solar farm was recently completed, and after the solar farm was built on part of the land, and part of that original parent tract later sold after the solar farm was under construction, that adjoining piece that came from that same parent tract, it sold for prices very similar to one of the land area not near solar farms were selling for, and I've listed a sale in the report that shows that. So, all three of these different solar farms that I looked at provided multiple matched pairs analysis to look at, and none of them showed any impact on values, sale price, and they're all still showing that, again, the solar farm isn't going to be a major impact for adjoining property value. And, again, this makes sense from, well, tourway appraisers look at these things, is you go out and you look and say, if there's gonna be damage from something, it's gonna be attributable to something. Typically, when you find problems, it's gonna be due to smell, noise, traffic, things of that nature. This solar farm's gonna produce less traffic than even a single-family house would have if this was developed with a subdivision, there'd be multiple trips per day for every house. This is gonna have less than one trip per week. Noise on the side, I've visited over 40 different solar farms, I've never heard anything outside the fence line on any of these. These are all fixed panels, they don't rotate or have any motorized parts for that. There's no odor that I've ever detected from them, there's nothing like that. The only factor that comes in that could be something people cite is they don't like the appearance of them. I've shown in my report again, some greenhouses that I looked at, the greenhouses are typically found in similar places these solar farms are being put up, and it has a very similar look. And, again, I've got, one of the pictures is of greenhouses that are right across the street, or right down the street from where I live and right across from the subdivision. Greenhouses have not shown any sign of an impact on values either. So, again, that makes sense that there's really nothing to assign any kind of damage to on these. There's positive aspects too that you look at, is that the land there is gonna be preserved, it's gonna be quiet, you know that there's not gonna be development going back there, not a lot of houses, not a lot of pollution coming from it, noise is gonna be down, traffic's not gonna be there. And, so, again, there are certain uses that could be, probably the property wouldn't have a much more of an impact on adjoining property values or property users. So, furthermore, as far as harmony of use and being located in an area like this, this is where these properties are being located. I've listed in there a number of different solar farm sites I've visited, calculated and shown in there what adjoining uses are around these other solar farms. They're being located in these areas where agricultural areas are transitioning into suburban areas. And, again, that makes sense because you need a large area of land for the solar farms, but you also need users, you're gonna have electricity, and the predominant use surrounding and uses to these solar farms is residential agricultural uses. So, it is my professional opinion that the proposed solar farm's not gonna have any impact on the adjoining property values, and that it is a whole nother use.
I have a question for you, sir. You mentioned you're a commercial appraiser, you have experience appraising residential property as well.
I do.
Based on, have you visited the site where these two properties are?
I have.
Based on your experience, do you feel like this is gonna challenge the homeowners, whether it's a nuisance or for a fact of resale?
Again, no, again, that's what the matched pair shows, that there is no evidence that there is any impact at all.
You mentioned the one in Chapel Hill, does that have houses around that within approximately of 1,000 feet?
No, that one has houses nearby but not close approximately, no. The one in Zebulon and the one in Goldsboro, they definitely do.
Do you think the appearance would have an issue with trying to resell? Because you said yourself that a lot of times, if I'm quoting you, the only drawback or disadvantage sometimes is the appearance.
Again, that's something that comes up with people for now, but, again, if you have any kind of landscaping screen that'll help with that, and that's what, again, Goldsboro is showing, is there are homes that are selling right there next to that solar farm, and it is showing it's really a fact, it's a major thing.
Is there any selling advantage that this gives the property? That's the question.
Pardon?
If the person that owns a residential lot adjacent to this, is there any advantage that it gives them by being in their backyard, so to speak?
Again, the advantages to come to that, again, for example, where I live, there's a cow pasture behind me, and I love having the cows back, they're lovely to stay, but I know it's gonna be a subdivision right there. There's a solar farm back there, actually, I could plant some trees, I wouldn't see the solar farm, I would have houses, dogs, noise, or anything coming from back there. I think that having that there, there are some advantages that some people wouldn't find.
Can you give us some examples based on your expert opinion, what the advantages would be?
Again, that was what I was just saying, there'd be no light pollution from other development behind you, you'd know what was gonna be there, there'd be no noise, there'd be no traffic that added to that.
Once again, you're gonna inconvenience the residential owner to do that.
I'm sorry, sir?
I mean, you're gonna inconvenience the residential owner to do that.
Again, all I can say is that from a measurable standpoint, it shows that there's no impact.
Well, okay.
If I could address your attention to tab two, this is a map that'll help explain some of the buffering and the landscaping that will be put up around this solar farm. This is required to have a certain amount of landscaping done as a buffer, and we've already talked about the 50-foot setback, but we will also be planting, an example is in the bottom-left here, two trees and 12 shrubs for every 100 feet by 10 feet, so 1,000 square feet, so that will be what will be blocking this site of the solar farm, in addition to the fence which will be closest to the solar farm. So, that will be what will prevent the homeowners from seeing the solar farm.
Well, in this case, like I asked earlier, there's only one homeowner here, and he's leasing the property, correct? In this site, there's only one homeowner, is that correct?
Let's see, I've got a list of all the adjoining property owners as far as it goes.
But that would directly affect someone.
There are a couple of residential properties right there, here's, if you look on page two of my report, there's a map that identifies the adjoining property, and on page three, they just have the breakdown of who that is and what that use is. I'm seeing a total of four residences that are either across the street or adjoining with the property.
So, have you talked to any of the property owners that are joining this property?
No.
Like you did at the Goldsboro subdivision?
No, again, I spoke with the folks there in Goldsboro because that's where I did my actual matched pair close sales analysis. There's no analysis on the site, probably the utility bill, I can't really do a matched pair analysis here.
I'm just gonna ask a quick question, are any of those properties?
Okay, well, let me just address that. So, you just said that you cannot give an analysis on the property of how it would affect the property values, is that what you just said, is that what I heard you say?
I can't do a matched pair analysis on this site for that purpose yet. What I can do is do a matched pair analysis where there's actually close sales, or where there's actually a solar farm I can test for, there's no solar farm here for me to test for. And I can say that looking at Goldsboro, those homes are, there's definitely homes that are priced in the 240, 270 price range that are backing up to a solar farm, and it shows no impact from before the solar farm was announced, but through ongoing after the solar farm was built, so it's having no impact on those homes.
So, how does the square footage of this subdivision, do you have analysis of how the square footage, I think there's some, maybe a little bit of data in here, shows, yeah, so the square footage on this subdivision compared to any others is pretty comparable? Is that what I'm seeing, from your analysis, as far as price per square footage of that home?
These price per square foot, this is, again, if you look at the close sales that happened in this subdivision before the solar farm was announced, that's showing you what consisted in that subdivision prior to any notice of anything about solar farm, so this is a completely self-encapsulated analysis.
Okay, but this analysis is just for this subdivision?
Well, this analysis looks at what impact a solar farm has, and you can extract that and compare that.
Right, so my question is, is do you have any data on what is the average square foot of another subdivision located in Goldsboro, 15 miles away from this subdivision?
I don't have anything that, like, that, and that would not be useful for this analysis.
So, I think it would.
But if you look at what the, again, before the solar farm was announced, that's showing you what things were going, but there's no difference between a solar farm whatsoever.
And what year was the solar farm?
That was built in 2000, last year, 2013.
So, solar farm was built in 2013, okay.
I have two questions, and I don't know who they're more appropriately addressed to. My first question is the noise, what type of noise these solar panels or solar farms make. My next question would be, is raising the materials that may not be on this public hearing, maybe the next one, is that we don't have a solar farm ordinance specifically addressing solar farms. What are you guys seeing in terms of buffers? You know, we just have a 50-foot standard buffer here in the zoning area, but what are y'all seeing in terms of buffers for these farms?
Is your question buffers in other areas of North Carolina?
Yes, yes.
A lot of them have, and I can't speak to exact numbers, but a lot of them have similar landscaping requirements where you have to build a certain amount of trees and a certain amount of shrubs at a certain height. So, in that sense, there are a lot of similar landscaping requirements. I think the 50-foot setback is pretty common, and I want to reiterate that here, that 50-foot setback is a minimum, it's much greater in some areas around the property, so that's the minimum, is 50 feet. And so, I think that addresses the second part of your question, and Tommy can talk about the noise question.
Address the setback question too while we're on that. I was heavily involved last year in putting together a template solar ordinance for North Carolina, where we brought stakeholders together, and I don't remember the exact values that ended up in that template ordinance, but they were in the ballpark of 50 feet, perhaps less in some dimensions, the front side and back of property of a solar farm. So, it's definitely in line with what we found from the research last year in the stakeholder input in the state last year.
Would you think it reasonable to require a greater buffer when you butt a residence versus when you butt a cow pasture or a forestry plan?
Perhaps, and how we dealt with that in the template was an additional buffer from an individual dwelling, so 100-foot buffer from the farm to any actual residential structure. But it, but from what I remember, I don't think we had a different buffer from different types of, different types of property, different zone properties, but there was that distinction from a dwelling.
Yeah, right.
How would you control, since you're the engineer, I had another question for you. This one, one of the projects butts right up to US 70, which is a high-traffic road, lots of speed. If a vehicle was to crash into there, would that pose a threat to those people that possibly could be in that automobile accident? How do you control the power, how do you cut it off, that sort of thing?
The voltage at the panels is several hundred volts DC, which is dangerous if you come in contact with it, but it's much lower voltage than a lot of electrical lines in the area, so if you were hit a power pole, that would be... in the area, so if you were hit a power pole, that would be generally more dangerous than...
We have ability to cut a power pole off, do you have ability to cut that, cut this device off?
Parts of the system shut down immediately when they're disconnected from the grid. If there's still sun shining on the panels, there's still voltage in some locations. So that aspect can't be turned off entirely, but I'm not sure a car could come in far enough to hit a panel either.
Trailer could potentially do that.
Yeah, so just to add to that, I've dealt with the utilities quite a bit, and so technically there's a recloser on both sides of the meter, one's on our side, one's on theirs. They have the ability to manually shut it off, they have to also have the ability to remotely shut it off, and we have the same capacity inside our facilities. So if we heard of that happening, then of course there'd be an immediate shutdown of the entire facility, and then there's also resistance built into the inverters, where if there was some strange fluctuation, the inverter would shut down until it's figured out too. So there's quite a bit of safety and protection built into both sides, both on the grid side and on the other side of the meter over on our side.
And how close would those technicians be to come out and make that happen in the event this emergency took place?
Well, once again, we can shut our facility down remotely if we need to.
But if it's the infrastructure damage, you still can guarantee that it'd be 100% shut down if a motor vehicle accident took place in or about the property? In other words, if a vehicle crashed into it, and you can't, can you guarantee you can shut it down?
Yes, sir, we can shut it down. We have remote monitoring that can shut down the inverters and shut the system down, absolutely. And the utility company has the same power, the same authority.
I didn't address the noise question.
Right.
Sorry.
The only noise that is on site comes from the inverters only when the sun is shining and they're doing their business, and most of that noise is from some cooling fans. And in the inverters from the manufacturer, they'll have a specification for what that noise rating is at X. And then the inverter manufacturers will generally provide additional studies that show further out, say at 10 feet, at 50 feet, 100 feet, what is the sound. I've seen a number of studies, they took measurements around the perimeter of a solar farm, and there was no noise from the inverter that was able to be measured at the perimeter of the solar farm. That would not be the case if the inverter was right at the edge, but generally the inverters are set back a little bit, and you don't have to be very far away before the sound drops to the same as ambient. And of course, there's zero sound at night when the sun is down, there's no sound generated at all.
Are there any other questions?
I have one other question for the appraiser. So if I'm, just for clarification, if I'm looking at your report right, the, and I'm mainly concerned with the adjoining property owners, the subdivision that you looked at in Goldsboro, since this is what you did your analysis on. The, can you tell me what the average sales price was before the adjoining, before the farm was announced?
Seventy-four ninety-five a square foot.
Seventy-four ninety-five, and that was before it was built? And what is the average self-price after it was built?
Seventy-two dollars and forty-four cents.
Seventy-two, it actually is less after it was built.
But there are adjustments that you had to consider, because if you look in the notes, there's a, before, we're looking at one and a half story per dominant, all those, and a smaller square footage. They are larger building, larger homes being built after, because as time went on, they started building homes 500 square feet larger, and as you build a larger house, you get a strong discount on your price per square foot.
But based solely on the price per square foot, it is correct to say that it averages less?
Well, sure, if you want to ignore, you know, normal appraisal, sure, but if you want to look at really addressing what's going on, you've got to put a discount, when you have a 3,400 square foot, you're comparing it to a 2,900 square foot house, you have to adjust for that.
Thank you. I have an additional question too. Our planning board members actually posed this question, I don't think they got a clear answer. There's mention about goats being placed in these solar farms for, I guess, eating the vegetation, can y'all address that, what your plan is with that?
Keith can address that.
It's even in your pictures, you've got some goats on there, I'm just curious.
At this time, we're not planning on using sheep or goats in the facility. That's an option that we could do, but we'll probably just do the standard O and M and maintenance on it.
One other question, probably answered just out of curiosity, so the entire, you're only using portion of this track, right?
Yes, sir.
Are there any plans to expand it to the other portion? Do you have any lease, any options or anything?
No, in fact, there's not even an option to expand it, there's, because of the utility structure, so the reason they're both five-megawatt facilities is because that's the size that we can do per the, our purchase agreement with the utility, and we could expand beyond that.
Have you heard from any of the other adjoining property owners as far as either positives or negative comments from any of the property owners?
We've had, we've had no objections or, either way.
Okay, thank you.
Have you spoke to them?
Excuse me?
Have you addressed the property owners?
We've talked to the landowner, but we have not talked to the property.
He's obviously forward, because he's going to lease you the property, but he won't have any objection unless you talk to somebody.
Yeah, so our landowner himself has gone out and spoke to some of the people, he didn't swear himself in, but he's here tonight, and he could probably address that if you wanted to swear him in, have him talk to you about that, he's gone out and talked to him.
If there are no other questions, we'll wrap up the Nitro project. We think this is a really great project for Smithfield. It meets all four requirements in the 13.17 section of the Unified Development Ordinance. We've shown that the use will not materially endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare, and we've shown that for a few reasons. Tommy talked to you about the environmental aspects of solar farms, and that there's no negative environmental effects, and Keith talked to you about the monitoring that would prevent any accidents that was brought up as a possible concern. And second, we've met the requirements that the location and use of this property meets all required conditions and specifications under the ordinances. Third, we've shown that the use will not adversely affect the use or any physical attribute of adjoining or abutting property for a few reasons. We talked to you today about the buffer that's going to go up, all the trees and shrubs and fence to prevent people from seeing the solar farm, and Rich has talked to you about similar situations where the solar farm didn't have a measurable effect on the property sales. And finally, we've shown that the location and character of the use is in harmony with the area here in Smithfield, and conforms with the land use plan. So we think that this is a benefit for Smithfield, and we hope that you find the same, and at this point, we'd like to offer in all of our exhibits and evidence that we presented today.
Thank you, you did a great job running our meeting for us. Thank you. Before we wind this up, is there anybody in the audience here who'd like to speak to this issue? Are there any of the adjacent landowners here now? If you'd come forward, we can swear you in, if you want to speak. You can come up to the front and take your stand. Shannon will swear you in. Just state your name and address, please.
I am Teresa Creach Parker. My mother is Audrey Barnes Creach, and she lives at 1990 Yavton Grove Road. We live in property across the street, or she lives in property across the street. And I came to the planning meeting, and I had 10 concerns that I expressed as concerns, and I have Mr. Keith Colson's business card with me to say that he has heard from a property owner. So I think that needs to be in the record, that property I have as a property owner spoken, not against necessarily, but I have made my concerns aware to the planning board.
Well, we're here in an open public meeting now, would you like to tell us your concern or express?
Well, same things that you have asked about with the vegetation, will it be a clean area, will it affect environmentally? My mother lives in that house across the street, which will be even further away than the landowner, and I just want to be sure she's safe.
Did their answers satisfy you?
They did, and I've read a lot about solar farms, and I don't think we know the effect in the future, because they're young. I'm not against it necessarily, but I need to hear to see what the experts say that they think will happen.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? On this issue, just this issue. All right, well, I'm going to look for a motion to close this public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paul, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Who would be responsible for making sure that the landscaping is kept up out in that area?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
Who would be responsible for making sure the landscaping would be kept up out there? Would it be the city's responsibility, or would it be the county's responsibility?
Currently, there is a glitch when we took in the ETJ from the county. Our ordinance is deal with zoning strictly. The county zoning ordinance dealt with other things like condition of premises, like grass mowing and those type things. So we have, and I'm going to make a report at the manager's request a little bit later on to you about updating the UDO. There's a list of about 13 things that the county had in their zoning ordinance that we don't have in our zoning ordinance to regulate properties in the ETJ, and one of them is appearance and grass mowing and maintenance, which that's going to come before you, starting in July, to start amending the UDO to take care of some of these issues so we can control properties outside the town limits. Currently, we can only regulate condition of properties inside the city limits.
Any other questions? All right, well, at this point, I'd like to go through each of the findings individually, and we're going to approve or deny them. I'm not going to read the whole things out, because they're written in the agenda here, but the first finding of fact.
What page are you on, sir?
I'm on page 15. It's based on the evidence and testimony, and I'm abbreviating this. If this is approved, we're going to agree it will not materially endanger the public health or safety. If we deny it, we'll be denying it on the fact, on this first of four facts, is about material endangerment. How's the council vote on the first finding of fact?
I move we approve finding of fact number one.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. The second finding of fact, does it meet all the required specifications that conform to the standards and practices of sound land use and plan for town in Smithfield?
I move we approve finding of fact number two.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're going to move to this third finding of fact, which is on page 17. Based on the evidence and testimony, will this substantially injure the value of the adjoining property? Are we going to approve on that basis or deny on that basis?
Based upon the evidence submitted, I'll deny.
Got a motion to deny?
I'll motion to deny.
Second.
I got a motion of second to deny, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I'm going to read the denial of fact into the minutes. The proposed solar farm, as submitted, will be detrimental to the adjacent land use due to the type, size, and intensity of the project. Adjacent land and residential use will suffer from reduced land values due to loss and desirability of land that is in close proximity to a major utility. That's the motion you made to deny based on that, is that correct, Mr. Wade?
Correct.
Is that the factual basis? We're going to make sure we get this one right.
Yeah. Just if there could be a motion that the statement read, that's a continued package, is the factual basis for the denial of that number, I believe it's number three.
Yes.
Okay, and could you make a motion to that effect?
I did.
You made a motion to deny it, now this is the factual reason why it's denied.
It stated here in the proposal.
And it's what the mayor just read, he read the same thing.
Yes. The proposed solar farm, solar farm, form as submitted, detrimental to the adjacent land uses due to the type, size, and intensity of the project. Adjacent land and residential use will suffer from reduced land value due loss to desirability of the land that is in close proximity to a major utility. Is that what you asked for, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And you need a second on that.
I got a motion as read by, and made by Charles Williams, so I have a second, we're going to redo that one.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Do I need to go ahead and do number four, or do I stop right there?
Mayor should probably do, it only takes one reason to undermine the conditional use, but just for the record, you might want to go through that fourth finding, just to clarify.
We're going to do the fourth one just for clarification.
And there's supposed to be some evidentiary basis for these findings. You've got to have some evidence, evidence is what you need.
Finding of fact number four, which, as you can read on page 18, but to summarize, based on the evidence and testimony presented to the finding of the town council, the application, if approved, would not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of town in Smithfield or violate the character of existing standards for development, adjacent properties, or as approved, the following additional stated conditions.
I move we approve finding of fact number four.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, based on all of the findings that have been decided, we're going to make a motion to either approve this or a motion to deny this planning request.
I'm making, I make a motion to deny this request, based upon failure to meet all of the above four stated findings, and for reasons stated therein, I move to recommend denial of conditional use permit application number CUP-14-03 for the following stated reason, which is, the proposed solar farm is submitted. The proposed solar farm is submitted will be detrimental to the adjacent land uses due to the type, size, and intensity of the project. Adjacent land and residential use will suffer from reduced land values due loss and desirability of their land that is in close proximity to a major utility.
I've got a motion, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, Mayor, who's the second on that?
All right, I think we are finished with CUP 1403 Nitro Solar Farms. All right, I think we are finished with CUP 1403 Nitro Farms. We're now gonna move to the next item, agenda number three.
We'll back into public hearing.
We're gonna reopen, we're gonna open a motion to open the public hearing to consider CUP-1404 Elizabeth Solar.
I make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let me reference you once again to the location. The floor is of U.S. Highway Business 70. This is Steel Running, just off the front of the property. I found those works and the junction to 70 is about a half mile of total running down. The basic uses here is there's existing junkyard here, and the property, should I say, salvage yard, and the property that's this property that's outlined right here goes all the way to 70, back a distance of something thousand feet into the adjacent area. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct and operate a solar farm. The acreage of the property is 30.42 acres. It's going to be owned to R20A and B3 business. Again, this is part of the area which was given to the county, from the county to us in the ETJ transfer a few years back, so it is now in our jurisdiction. There is no proposed zoning change. Existing in previous uses, it's been residential and agricultural as well as commercial there for the auto salvage yard. There's a couple of garages there for repair of automobiles. I think this says it's a four-megawatt plant, but I think Mr. Coulson a few minutes ago said that it is a five-megawatt plant. It's fixed tilt photovoltaic solar farm with electric power inverters, electrical transformers, and buried conduit. The proposed facility will tie into the Duke Power Grid. There are no particularly known environmental issues associated with the property with the information that we've been, had submitted. The adjacent zoning to the north is R20A, to the south is R20A, to the east is B3 business, and to the west is R20A. Staff analysis finds that the strategic growth plan has identified this area as being suitable for low-density residential and agricultural uses as well as commercial. It's, the public utilities type use is a permitted use in all zoning districts, and therefore, by conditional use, it is allowable use within both of the zoning districts. The existing and surrounding land uses are low-density residential agriculture in nature, and it's unlikely that negative impacts on existing and future surrounding uses will occur, providing the site is properly buffered in accordance with the UDO. The signs, the site requirements, the sign requirements will not be of any major impact on the property. If developed, this property will be in the pine level fire district, should have no impact on schools or recreation. The access to the property will be by private drive from U.S. Highway 70 Business. Water and sewer, if required, will be by Well and Septic, and the electrical provider will be by Duke Energy. Planning Department recommended to the planning board at its May 1st meeting to approve the project. However, the planning board at that meeting, on a split decision vote, four to two, recommend denial of the conditional use permit. And I might wanna explain that there was some confusion in the voting on that. I'll try to make it short and sweet. We had seven members present at the opening. We had one member to reclusive himself from voting, therefore, we were at six, so we had six voting members. When it came time to take a vote, one member did not cast a vote. By North Carolina law, general statute, A168, it's required that if a vote is not cast, it goes in the affirmative. So the motion was made to deny the request. Therefore, the vote went as a positive vote to deny. If it had not, if the individual had actually cast his vote, he has indicated his desire would have been in favor of the solar farm, which would have been a negative vote, a nay against the denial. Therefore, it would have been a 3-3 tie, and would have come forth to the council with no recommendation, or they would have to go back and make another recommendation and vote on that. So that's how that progressed. The Town Council was requested to review the petition for a solar farm on property located in this R20A and B3 zoning districts and make a decision in accordance with finding of fact for conditional use permit. Again, starting on page 75, you find, you will find your finding of fact for the Elizabeth Solar Farm, very similar to the one that you just acted upon for the Nitro Farm. You have the planning board report in your minutes, starting on page 83. And about the only thing different than this one, than the last one, there is a variance in the buffer. It's 50 foot on the entire property, set in the immediate vicinity of this residence, about 100 feet. Now, there was some discussion on landscaping in the last one. I just would like to let you know that if you have concerns on landscaping this being a conditional use permit, you can conditionalize the permit and require additional landscaping if you so desire. With that, I stand open for questions.
Mr. Embler, the site plan that's included in the packet, I don't know that I can tell buffering requirement from any existing residents. I'm sorry, I know the requirement's 50 feet, but does the site, how many feet does a site plan that's tendered have?
You don't have a site plan submitted?
Yes, sir.
I don't know whether you have a fellow person in your property, in your packet, but it's a green hatch area, crosshatch, and it basically is 100 feet here, and it drops back to 50. It has one buffer up on 70, it drops back to 50 on, to the east and to the south, and it looks like it comes back up to 100 along the way.
What's the buffer along 70?
70, it appears to be 100 feet of this, excuse me, no, it says 50 feet from my left.
From the house, which would be my left. Yeah, right, yes, sir.
It's like 100 foot up.
Any other questions for Paul? I'm gonna ask the applicant, are you in agreement with the testimony offered by Mr. Embler? And do you have any other, any more testimony to give?
We do. We are in agreement to the extent that the planning board approved the overall proposal. We disagree with their ruling on the first element, that they found that it did not promote the general welfare of the area.
What basis is your disagreement on?
Well, that's the purpose of our, what we're here to show you all today. And I don't think I need to backtrack and introduce everyone once again, but this is a separate booklet to specifically address the Elizabeth property, which was just explained to you. A lot of the same things apply. The buffer requirement applies here as well, and we have, Keith again can come up and talk about that, should you have any more concerns for him. And Tommy again can give you some more information on solar farms, but I would really like Rich to come up here and talk to you about this specific property. And before we get into that, I'd like to reiterate the issue with the buffers, and especially with some concerns about the buffers compared to where the houses are located. We have complied with all ordinance here with regards to these buffers. And to the extent that there is a consensus here that there should be more buffers, or it should be farther from these houses, then that's something that the planning board ought to address. But as, for our purposes here today, we have met all land use and unified development ordinance requirements for landscape buffers and setbacks. And to the extent you have any further questions about our compliance with those ordinances, Keith can address those, but the planning board found for both properties that we had met all requirements. So at this time, I'd like to have Rich come up here and talk you through what he has found with this property.
Again, Rich Kirkland, again, I'm a MAI certified general appraiser in North Carolina. Pretty much the same testimony I said before, as far as the analysis goes, do I need to go into that further? Specifically, this site, one of the things unique about that one home that's right there is there is existing mature trees right there. It's already existing mature trees. So, again, it's a much bigger buffer, and everything else applies from that point. There's gonna be little to be seen from that side. Was there further?
Do you come to any opinion as to whether or not the location and use of this solar farm, the Elizabeth Solar Farm, would adversely affect the use or any physical attribute of adjoining properties?
Yeah, it's my opinion that this is gonna have no impact on the adjoining uses or the adjoining patterns.
And did you come to any sort of opinion about whether the location and use of this property would be in harmony with the area?
It is my professional opinion that this is in harmony with the area.
Are there any questions for Rich?
Thank you.
Tommy, would you like to come up here and just express your conclusions?
Hello again. It is my opinion that nothing about this site, or this project at this site, would endanger the public health or public safety.
And Tommy, is everything else the same at this property with regards to any environmental impact of solar panel?
Yes, and all my earlier testimony would apply to this site as well.
So you don't find that there's any environmental...
Correct. I do not find any environmental impacts, or negative environmental impacts from the project at this site.
Are there any questions for Tommy? So again, when we get into the actual requirements of the ordinance here, the requirement is showing that the use will not materially endanger the public health, safety, and general welfare. And both in the previous testimony and here today, we've shown that there's no environmental disadvantages to these solar farms. They produce energy. There's no odor involved with them. There's very minimal sound. It's not gonna increase the traffic in the area. There's gonna be construction jobs at the outset to produce, to build these solar farms. So we find that there's no, there's no disadvantage, and there's nothing that would endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare with this solar farm. And as to the second condition, the planning board has found that we have met all required conditions under the land use ordinance and the unified development ordinance. And for the third condition, the use will not adversely affect the use or any physical attribute of the adjoining or abutting properties. And again, there's no odor here, there's no traffic, there's no pollution, this is a green energy source, and it's a benefit to the community. And finally, the location and character of the use is in harmony with the area and conforms with the land use plan. So are there any other questions for any of our experts? We recommend that you approve this conditional use permit based on the oral testimony today and the evidence that we have put forth in this, in this packet, and we request that you would move that into evidence. And we're happy to address any other questions.
Any questions at all?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you. At this time, is there any comments from people who have been sworn to testify? Please come forward.
Mayor Council, my name is Gene Foxworth. I own the house at 201 Hill Road. I will say it's not a pleasure to be here tonight, but it is a pleasure to see each and every one of you. I do have a small bit of evidence I'd like to enter, but before I get started, I would like to correct Mr. Embler. He made a misstatement at the outset of this, and there are two planning board members here that I think would attest to that. No one abstained from voting that night. In fact, the chairman voted and then had to go back and recuse himself from, from that vote in the meeting. We discussed that openly in the meeting. Ms. Daughtry, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Lane voted on the first finding of fact to deny, and Mr. Upden and Mr. Matthews voted to approve the first finding of fact. Like I said, two of the planning board members are here, and I think they would both speak to that. Also, the applicant stated that during the finding of fact, that while they did vote to deny the first, that they voted to approve the other three. We did not go through the finding of fact that night. After the first was denied, the planning board stopped there and did not proceed through the rest of the finding of fact, which would have been the proper procedure in this matter. So I wanted to clear those things up, and like I said, there's two planning board members here, and I think they would attest to that fact, should you have any questions.
Mr. Foxworth, you can approach me, Mike from Sunlight Partners?
No, sir. I did approach Sunlight Partners, though, and I asked more about the proposal in the beginning.
But they did not address the residents. Oh, you can't speak for everyone, but at least yourself.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What I have here, and I'll pass this out. I have an email from Lou Green, trying to lose the praise. I sent the site planner, Mr. Green, a question of whether he thought this would endanger my property. And pretty much, and you can read it for yourself, sir, thank you. You can read it for yourself, but now we're reading it together. What Mr. Green has stated is there are no comps on this. I think that would coincide with what their appraiser said, that there are no comps on this, especially when it is on two sides of the piece of property.
You're asking the board to hear hearsay from a person who's not here to testify?
Yes, sir.
On what basis?
The fact that I have this email.
Because you want to?
Yes, sir.
It's a public hearing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It's a public hearing.
Noted, Mr. Foxworth.
He's allowed to speak. It's a public hearing. I understand it's not.
I know, just, you're not supposed to... And the point behind this is that, as they would say, there are no real comps on this from an appraisal standpoint. This is an entrance corridor into Smithfield. If y'all look on the map, it's labeled as B3 zoning. This is the entrance, the eastern entrance into Smithfield. Selma has the bypass into Selma, but this is the eastern entrance into the Towne of Smithfield. This B3 zoning district is labeled as a highway entrance business district. And I'll read to you, this is out of your ordinance. The purpose of this district is to allow commercial use with proper regulation and safeguards to promote health, safety, and efficient movement of traffic, orderly development along major arteries, while enhancing and preserving the environmental and aesthetic qualities of the area. The proper location and development of use along these corridors will contribute to enhance trade, tourism, capital investment, and general welfare. I think this does nothing to enhance trade and general capital investment and general welfare.
Just one question for...
Yes, sir.
What is your occupation?
I work in the planning field.
In the planning field?
Yes, sir.
So are you a planner, or...
Yes, sir. And I am not here to represent myself as presenting fact on that, only as the resident and owner of 201 Hill Road. This area was taken into the ETJ several years ago, and the purpose, I guess, was that this is the future growth area of the town. And again, I don't know that that's consistent either. As far as the use, I think Smithfield treats this as a public utility substation. I think that that's the use that it, that is here tonight for conditional use. And I don't know, again, that's consistent. I don't know how many 30-acre substations that there are, or that the proper safeguards are in place. According to Purdue University, and I again pulled this offline, Purdue University says that a diesel train at 45 miles an hour at 100 feet is 80 decibels. To give you a comparison, I have that here. I'll be glad to pass it around if the board cares to look at it. Finally, like I said, I would ask you to hear me tonight. This is my biggest investment. This is, I've lived here for the past seven years, and it has been my savings account for the last seven years. And I don't think there's anything comparable, especially as it pertains to being on two sides of my residence. Thank you.
Can you state what you think the value decreased for the right?
No, sir, I can't neither. Can you speak to that? Like I said, that, I don't have any idea.
Think it would decrease?
Yes, sir, I do.
Because?
Because having a utility like this on two sides of it, I believe it would.
Mayor, if I could ask a quick question before Mr. Foxworth?
Sure.
Just a couple of things, if I could.
Yes, sir.
And again, I want to summarize your testimony, but just to make it clear. It's your opinion and your testimony as a property owner there that you believe that this, that this use of the solar farm adjacent to your property, that it will substantially injure the value of your property?
Yes, sir.
That is your opinion, your testimony?
In my opinion, yes, sir.
Okay. And you do have some experience in the planning field, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me also ask, do you believe, you referenced the corridor or corridor, stuttered corridor plan, do you believe that that use of that property would be against the intent of that corridor plan and not meet those requirements?
I do not believe that it meets the intent of that B3 district.
Of the B3 district?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
As is shown by the law.
Okay, and given the entrance factor and of that property location, you believe it would not meet that?
Yes, sir.
General goal to, as a use in that type of corridor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And also, if you have any documents, would you like to submit those into the record? Copies of them?
I've submitted everything I have, other than the Purdue study, and I will submit that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a few questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And for the record, I'd like to object to the admission of any evidence that he has brought here today, other than oral testimony, as it is not competent, and as the town attorney has referenced, it's inadmissible hearsay for this proceeding. I do have a few questions. You said you were a town planner, is that right?
But I did not hold myself out in that profession. I'm a stockholder.
Okay, and have you had any contact?
Ma'am, this is not cross-examination. This is.
We are allowed to cross-examine anyway, this is here.
This is supposed to be a factual hearing, okay? You're sitting as a judge. They're supposed to present evidence, and you make it based on factual, and it's appealable, okay? I must have appealed two dozen of them. So, you know, you have to do it on facts. So she's got a constitutional right to ask him questions.
Okay, all right.
And we just stuck, those are rules, not our rules, they're the state's rules.
Related to the fact that this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, have you had any contact with any town council meeting, town council members about this specific property?
I sent an email out last week showing this piece, my piece of property.
Okay, and what else did that email say?
Just that I was opposed to the project.
Did you identify yourself as a landowner?
Yes, I did.
As a landowner that was abutting the property?
I did.
And you said you were a planner, so.
I did not state that in the email, nor hold myself out as such.
Okay, but you are a planner, as you're applying. Okay, and so you are familiar with these sort of proceedings, and you know that they're quasi-judicial proceedings?
Yes, sir.
So you know that contact with the town council is prohibited?
I send it out to every town council member in Maryland.
My question was, you know that communications with town council is prohibited?
I don't believe that that was, I don't believe that that was.
Okay, and the basis for your opinion that this hurts the general welfare, did that have anything to do with the fact that you're trying to sell your property?
No, sir, no, ma'am.
And have you approached the owner of the land, of the land here in any way?
I did. In fact, I called them right after I saw the proposal and told them I would be glad to sell it, then it was their interest in this property, not mine. Like I said, this would have been my savings account, as I said.
So you called the landowner and said that if he would agree to buy your property, it wouldn't be a problem?
It would be, it wouldn't be my problem, that's correct.
So.
And he didn't want to be, he did not want that piece of property with that solar farm.
The owner of the property?
That's correct.
Well, we'd like, at this point, since you said the owner of the property would not like the solar farm there, we'd like to have him come up here and rebut that testimony, because he is in support of this solar farm.
I'm Al Pedden, and I own the solar property, Elizabeth Solar Property, and I very much would like to see it developed, and I think it would be a big benefit to the town of Smithfield if it were. I see no problems with it. Mr. Foxworth did call me and ask me if, he said, you know, if you want to buy my property, then you won't have to worry about me anymore, I'll be out of the picture. So I said, you know, at this time, I'm not in a position to do that. I didn't say that I wasn't interested. I mean, you know, I would have no problem buying his property. Especially if I want to promote the solar farm on my property, why would I have a problem with buying his property? So as far as that goes, that don't hold any water.
And so again, I'd just like to reiterate my objection to the consideration of any evidence that's not permitted by the local ordinance, and specifically, any evidence that was passed out as inadmissible hearsay.
All right, well, I'm going to ask a quick question of the council. If you received an email from Mr. Foxworth, I don't know if you did or not, or opened one, but if you did and you opened it, did it influence your ability to make a fair decision tonight? I'd like each of you to say yes or no to this statement, so we can set this aside. Did you get an email from Mr. Foxworth, and did it influence your decision?
I got an email, and it did not influence me.
Eric?
Same thing.
I got an email, did not influence me.
I got an email, did not influence.
I did not receive an email. Did you send it to the town email?
Yes, sir, I did.
Well, it's probably sitting there for me then.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I have not seen your email.
Likewise, Mayor. It did not influence. No influence.
I don't remember if I got one or not, so I'm sorry, I'm like, Emery, I don't open my email a lot, but.
I sent it to all the town emails, that I pulled off of the Smithfield.
Well, I'm like, I don't read my emails half the time, but if I did.
Don't be offended, he doesn't return mine.
I don't think it would have influenced me.
And to be clear, were there any phone calls to these, was there any, did you approach any of them outside of tonight?
Just to speak to upfront.
To introduce them tonight?
Just introduce myself tonight.
I'd like to reiterate my objection to that contact with all the town council members as inadmissible.
Mayor, for the record, I'd like to state, this is the first time I've seen that gentleman, and I don't have any, you know, from my perspective of this, and I disagree with how he's being treated, just for the record.
But you're not influenced by Mr. Foxworth?
Absolutely not. He introduced himself tonight.
As a concerned citizen.
Mr. Dickless, he can bring that up.
Well, I ask for the record to make sure everybody's clear on that. Is there any other comments from the public that's been sworn in? Does anybody else want to make a statement?
I do have a question for you. Which piece of property is yours on the map?
This piece of property right here.
Is there any other questions from the council for anybody who's spoken?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the appraiser. So for this piece of property, we don't have any type of appraisal or any type of study performed on this piece of property, is that correct?
That's not how you do a match pair analysis.
I didn't ask that question. My question is, do we have any analysis on the impact to this piece of property?
Yeah, that is what you do, is you measure on another property where there is a solar farm. You cannot measure something that doesn't exist. You measure a solar farm, the impact of solar farm on adjoining properties somewhere else, and.
So yes or no question, do we have it or not?
I did not do the impossible, no, sir.
Okay, so, thank you. So the study that we do have is the same one that was done for the other property that was listed, the match pair analysis for the subdivision in Goldsboro, correct?
As well as Zebulon and Chapel Hill.
Okay, so it holds true that the adjoining sales of this, what you gave us for Goldsboro, before the solar farm was built, had an average sales price of $74.95 per square foot?
And an average sales price of $219,000.
Right, okay. After the solar farm was built, we have a average sales price of roughly $72 per square foot, correct?
Seventy-two forty-four, for, again, an average sales price of $251,000. It's a much larger home being built, and again, the range is in seventy, ranges from $76 a square foot down to $69 a square foot for a ranch.
Right.
Again, you have to.
And that's the adjoining, adjoining. So it appears, based off of what you've said, that after, and I'm just looking at the numbers here, I'm not an appraiser, okay? So it appears that after it was built, the average square foot price went down.
Again, if you look at just those average prices, but you have to look at the other factors which are listed on here, which are the style of house and the size of the house.
But you would agree that the average sales price that you have listed here went down?
No, the average sales price went up considerably, went up over $30,000.
Square footage.
Again, the price per square foot went down, but the price per overall went up.
Okay.
As your price goes up and as your size goes up, there's a differential on the price per square foot.
But your average square foot price went down.
You want to look at it like that, but that is not how I am looking at it.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just looking at the numbers on the paper.
Well, there are other numbers on there that show the other direction, which shows the average price went up.
Right, so then, the, now, if we look at the nearby, where are the nearby homes that you have listed?
These are in the same subdivision, just on the, further down the street, not backing up to the solar farm.
Okay, so the nearby homes, the sales, the average square foot before the solar farm was built was roughly $69 a square foot, correct?
Right.
Okay, and then the average square foot of nearby home sales after it was built, and this is nearby sales, actually went up to about $74 a square foot.
Correct.
So we have nearby home sales afterwards going up, we have adjoining sales afterwards going down per square footage, not overall sales, I understand that, but per square footage, based off of the numbers here. And I understand that you have.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, but yes, that's not exactly how that's being.
That's not how you view it, the numbers are.
Well, yeah, but I mean, he's the appraiser.
Well, again, you can, if you want to pull out numbers and try to like randomly pick numbers and try to say something, but again, the analysis shows that this is there, and again, if you adjust for that size differential, you're looking at about a 3% difference, which is based on that size differential, 500 square feet going up in size.
Thank you.
I have one question. These square foot differentials you were just asked about, do you view those differentials as substantial?
Again, I see that when you're talking about a 3% difference on a, when you're comparing a 2,900 square foot house to a 3,400 square foot house, then again, no, that's your size differential right there. That's what I see the difference in.
So that would be no, you don't.
No, I do not see that showing any evidence of anything other than the size that I'm seeing also on the chart. I see there's two numbers on there, you have to compare, the size and the price.
Mayor, I just have one or two questions for the appraiser, if I can, quick, it'll be fast. You mentioned earlier, and I understand that the dilemma in trying to find comparable properties, but you're giving an opinion. Do you feel like you have enough in comparable properties of existing solar farms to actually give an opinion at all on the impact, whether it's good or bad?
Again, I've visited over 40 solar farms, and I've been looking for match pairs.
I only see two or three in here.
Well, again, and I have a lot more in my files, but as far as where match pairs are, these are the ones that I can find match pairs of. The solar farms are being built, started being built during the recessions, for the most part. A lot of these residential developments were not allowed, there were not land sales, and there were not home sales to retract and measure. What I have found is these that I have, I've got right here, finding these is what I'm using for this analysis, there's multiple match pairs we're using here. And again, a small differential of plus or minus 1 or 3%, real estate market is an imperfect place. There is, in any subdivision, you'll see identical house right across the street, same floor plan, sell for $2,000 difference. It happens.
But it's fair to say that the comparables, you would like to have had more comparables to make it into.
Well, I would love to have more comparables, but this is a large number of match pairs, and more than most appraisers would bring to something of this nature.
Any other questions from the council?
I have a question to our town attorney. This email that was presented to me, one of the gentlemen spoke, I haven't really comprehended, and I have no idea where it's from, would it make sense for us to have someone take it back up away from us and destroy these?
It could, I doubt seriously. It influences you one way or another. You know, what you're trying to do in these proceedings is not have contact outside of proceedings, because these are fact proceedings, so you're deciding a conditional use based on facts, whereas a normal zoning here, and you come to the whole world, because you're sitting as a legislature. Here, you're sitting sort of like a trial judge on a factual issue. So you're supposed to try to keep those people away from you. Now, somebody sent you an email, you don't even know what it is till you open the email. So I mean, it's not a perfect world. Also, it could be in the newspaper, right? I mean, trials take place in the newspaper, so you can't be in a perfect, insular world. What you want on most of these is for people to go present evidence in the record, for instance, the property owner testified at the value of his property, and his opinion is to decrease in the value, and present those, that evidence in the record, so there is some record. I would not be worried much about this situation. The lawyer jumped on it, she does have a right to cross-examine, and there is an obligation to present evidence. I wouldn't worry about it.
Any other questions?
In the same breath, the appraiser, it's his opinion as well, because you don't know if it's property.
Say it again.
In the same respect for the landowner, having his opinion, it's his opinion that it could or not.
Right.
So either way, it's two opinions. Yes, I just wanted the landowner to state an opinion. So the appraiser's jumping up and down, stating an opinion. So in these things. He don't know if it's property. A landowner's got a right to state his opinion, he just needs to state it. I think he did that. I think he finally.
Okay, any other questions? Well, at this time, I need a motion to close this public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Parry's made a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we're going to go through the finding of facts, one by one, just like we did last. If you look at page 75 in your agendas, first line of the tract, finding of fact, based on the evidence and testimony presented to the finding of the town council for this application, did this, will this materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plans? Now, I'm not going to read the whole statement, but we need to prove or deny based for first of four, based on will it materially endanger the public health or safety if located where it is.
Mayor, I make a motion to deny the request based on the fact that it will endanger safety based on the location and proximity to the right of US Highway 70. Life safety could be challenged based on the testimony presented tonight. There's no confirmation on the utility.
All right, so I've got a motion to deny based.
Second.
In the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Two opposed. All right, we're going to go through the second, the second finding of fact, which is on your page 76.
I move, we approve finding of fact number two.
Thank you.
All right, meets all required specifications. I've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Finding fact number three, based on will it substantially injure the value of adjoining adjacent properties or not? injure the value of adjoining adjacent properties or not? Need to approve or deny based on.
I move, we approve it in the fact that I did not hear any evidence that it would be a substantial injury to the value.
I've got a motion.
That's important factor for you, that you are against.
Emery's made a motion, do I have a second for his motion? All right, motion denied.
Is there any need to be a motion?
I know there needs to be a motion, I'm asking, Asher, I, I need a motion of some type. Are we going to approve based on finding of fact number three? Will not, will injure the value of adjacent property, adjoining properties, or will not?
I make a motion to deny finding three of four. Proposed solar farm is submitted will be detrimental to the adjacent land use due to the type, size, and intensity of the project. Adjacent land and residential use will suffer from reduced land values due losses of their ability of their land that is in close proximity to a major utility.
Second. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Finding fact number four. Will, will not adversely affect the adopted plans and policies of the town of Smithfield. That's, that's an abbreviation. Whoever makes the motion, I'd like them to read the whole statement out, what their motion is. Either for or against, approval or denial.
I make a motion to approve finding four of four.
Second.
Can you read that, that approval, please, a full paragraph?
If I have to.
You will.
Green buffer will be in complete harmony with, I make a motion to approve finding four of four. Green buffer will be in complete harmony with the area. It will feature large, medium, and small trees and bushes. Solar panels will not be seen from neighboring sites and will not generate any noise or emissions. There are no impacts generated by the solar farm. It did not require sewer water service, create no traffic on the roads, it not impacts school populations, or requires any help services such as police or fire.
You're making a motion to approve on that. Yes, sir. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Raise your, I need a motion, a show of hands for those who approve.
For this?
For what, what Perry just, just read out. I need a show of hands to approve what the motion Perry just made.
Yeah, the motion was that it meets that requirement based on this.
Show of hands.
Motion to approve finding of fact number four.
One, two, three, four. All right. And a show of hands for those who didn't, who didn't deny it. Two. All right. All right. Now, now, now the sum up, we've gone through the four steps. Now, we're going to make a motion to approve or deny this, this, this earning permit. So, we've gone through the four steps, and we have, they have failed on some of them.
I make a motion to deny based upon Perry meeting all the above four stated findings, and for reasons stated therein, I move to recommend it is denied condition of use permit application, C P that fourteen dot four, for the following stated reasons.
What's the date of?
Ninety-one of four, proposed solar farm is submitted will be detrimental to the adjacent land use to the type, size, and intensity of the project. Adjacent land and residential use will suffer from reduced land values due loss and desirability of their land that is in the close proximity to a major utility. And finding three of four, which says the proposed solar farm is submitted will be detrimental to the adjacent land used due to the type, size, and intensity of the project. Adjacent land and residential use will suffer from reduced land values due loss and desirability of their land that is in close proximity to a major utility.
I've got a motion.
I second that motion.
You want to repeat the whole motion with your second, or just second?
Okay, your second, we just said it.
I don't think I could do it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We take a break for a minute.
We're going to take about a five-minute break. I'm recalling this meeting order. Now's time for Susan's comments. One minute comments for three minutes. Stand on it.
How y'all doing today? I'm here on, a part of some of the, the pay system in the town. We, um, we are, got a work schedule from seven to four-thirty, and this complies to water and sewer and the electric department. If, just say we were out there working a regular day.
I'm, I'm answering super quick, but I need your, you're supposed to state your name.
I'm sorry.
Your address.
I'm sorry. I'm Luther P. And it's about the pay.
And your, your address is?
Thirty-one twenty-seven Ranges Cross Road Road, San Juan, North Carolina.
All right, Luther, take off.
I'm sorry. But any, sorry about that. Anyhow, our work hours are from seven to four-thirty. If we had a pole to fall, or they had a water line to bust, we are having to take, say we work from two to ten P.M., anytime after four-thirty, we are having to take comp time. And we don't think that's right, because we are working after regular work hours. It shouldn't be made for us to have to take comp time for, after our regular work hours. That's what I'm here to state. I mean, I just, I think it's not right. I mean, to have to take comp time when you're working after four-thirty.
Luther, I want to ask, is there anyone here in the audience that agrees with, that represents Luther, want to raise your hands if it recognized? You feel the same as he does?
Yes, sir. I mean, anytime after four-thirty, we feel like it should be time and a half. Like I said, two o'clock, a pole falls, and we have to work to ten o'clock. After four-thirty, we're getting paid comp time, and we think we should get time and a half for it, because we're working after business hours. And we're not, we're not getting that. We've not got no choice in the matter. It's just, you're going to get comp time. We've not got the choice whether we want comp time or time and a half.
Mr. P, when do you get paid for your comp time? How does that work?
Sir?
When do you get paid for your, how, how are you getting paid for your comp time?
In other words, we take off. We have to take off. We can't have no more than forty hours. We have to take off of work. So, that's how we get paid for it. We can't build up no more than forty hours over a physical year. We have to, we're made to take off.
Manager, is it not correct we eliminated the policy of the comp time? Can you elaborate on that for us?
Yeah, this, these are primarily non-exempt employees. And so, basically, I think it's been maybe two years ago, about change.
Yeah, about two or three years ago.
About three years ago, there was a change to, and again, an effort to reduce and lower overtime pay to award the choice or give the alternative for comp time, which was what, what happened, I guess, about three years ago, basically. And again, with the effort to, you know, load that. And that's basically the same way it's treated, department by department. Now, again, it's different if they're called out, you know, in storms and that kind of thing, a different scenario. But I think, I think primarily you're talking about if you're called, I mean, that's a question. If you're, if you're staying ever for that day, like if there's a problem at three o'clock, then you go till.
Like if we were working at seven thirty, seven to four-thirty, and a pole falls at two o'clock, hits the road or scenario, a wire falls, a bunch of poles, or water and sewer has a leak, after four-thirty, we don't get paid time and a half. Town says we're going to pay you comp time, and we've not got no option in that. It's, that's just the way they say that it's going to be. So, I mean, I think that is, that is unfair to us, far as, you know, after business hours, have to take the comp time.
Mr. Griffin, how are you managing that? Is it causing you to get shorthanded, or?
I imagine it was the direction that they're giving to the money HR department, and they're correctly describing what's called continuation of that.
Well, what I'm saying is, how are you managing with your staff? Or are you, is it causing you any shorthanded opportunities, or by letting them off?
Well, they, they have, they have to ask for time off. It's comp time, overtime, generally approved. It's, it's always evaluated by the superintendent and myself, whether we can operate that particular time with that absence. So, if we can, it's approved.
But you're fortunate to take. If they work forty hours or, or over one week, you tell them, work less hours the next week to make up the difference. Is that my understanding?
Uh, no, that, that, that direction is not.
This was, this was come about before he got here. It was, um, the other one, the, um, what was it? Earl, Earl come about this situation before Kent got here. So, this was a, a thing that Earl had started. Earl Bocken.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the manager to look into it. I mean, tonight, we don't know enough, we've got a bunch of decisions on it.
If you don't mind, this is a representative for the electric department, too. I just expressed what, what my feelings about that situation is.
Could you state your, your name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Carl Garner. I live at thirteen oh six Highway thirty-nine, Zebulon, North Carolina. I'm a, we're not here asking for a raise, we're just here asking that we get paid for what we do and the time that we put in for it. It's like, if we come here and, if we, if we have a holiday, and then we're on vacation too, or something, you know, we take an extra day off or something, then if we get called in to work, and we have to work five, six, seven, eight hours, we don't get paid for it, because it, it falls into the, from what they're telling us, it falls into, we have to work forty hours before we get any pay whatsoever, overtime or anything like that. And we feel that we should, if we, if we're, he was on vacation, and we had a tree to fall in South Smithfield, it took three poles out. He came in off of vacation. It was Easter weekend, and I had taken a day off too. So, what happened was, I didn't get any pay for the overtime that I worked. I didn't get anything for coming into Smithfield. I came from Raleigh, where my family was at, to my home, and then I had to drive here. No one paid me anything for that whatsoever. I actually worked for the town of Smithfield for five hours for nothing, and had no comp time, no overtime, and didn't even get paid for miles coming in for it.
You didn't get any.
And this has been brought up before. We brought this up about three years ago when, uh, Mr. David was here. We brought that up about three years ago, and the, the town manager at the time, and they said they were going to look into it, and it was, I guess it was just forgotten or overlooked.
But there's not, you're, you're getting, you're getting time and a half off for those hours over forty. It's not like you're not, you're not getting cash compensation, but you're getting an equal amount, a time off equal to time and a half for the hours over forty, aren't you?
What we're saying, what all of us are saying is, is that we are having to work, but we're not getting the, the time, we're not getting paid for that time. And everybody knows times are hard, and it's sort of hard to spend comp time money. We, I mean, there's no way you can spend it.
So, you're not getting any overtime?
No, sir.
Period.
We get very little overtime.
You said when you came on Easter weekend, you didn't get any comp time?
Yeah. If we're, if you're, we have to work forty hours before we make any overtime whatsoever.
Right. So, you have to work forty hours, and then you.
That's what they tell us, we have to work forty hours. But up until three years ago, we did get some overtime.
Based off of what, number of hours in a day?
Yeah.
And normally, overtime would kick in over forty hours.
Water and sewer and the electric department is the only crews that have a true on-call sheet that we have to live by. On holidays, there is at least two electric people on call, and at least two water and sewer people on call. We have to be here. We don't get any pay for it. We have to work. If something happens, we come in, we work, we don't get any to pay for it. But everybody else that's here can go do what they want to do, and they still get the same pay that we get. And all we're asking is that we just get paid for what we do, the overtime for what we do.
Yeah. And Mayor, just to point out, I think that the two issues, that they're different. What Luther brought up is one issue.
It's all essentially the same, though, if you look at it.
Well, not, not really. What Carl brought up is, is a little bit different. I understand what he's saying about the holiday, but as, as you point out, I mean, part of that was an old practice, I think, that was changed. But you've got to earn the forty hours. And so, basically, if you're off on a labor day, Monday.
Holiday or vacation day would not count towards your.
That's right.
Which is the same as, as my company.
Right. And that's one issue, you know what? Luther's bringing up is a little bit, is a little bit different. But, I mean, the net effect is obviously less, you know, less paid. But, and they were paid in a different manner going back, I think, several years. So, anyway, I just want to clarify, it's two, two slightly different.
Well, since, I reckon since we don't get paid for the holiday, we used to, but it got cut out. Anyhow, since you don't get paid for the holiday, I would say, um, all we ask is, if you had to come in for the ti- holiday, you know, least time and a half, if you had to come in for the holiday. I mean, if we're off, that may be a different story, but a holiday, you know, we have to come in, if a fire pole falls, we got to come in and fix it, no matter how long it takes. We're just asking, you know, if we come in on a holiday, what about thinking, thinking about time and a half? I mean, that's, that's all we're asking. I mean, we know we're, we're thankful to get the holiday, but we have to come in and work.
So, and, and we just take this up with the manager, but just, just understand, if you come in on a holiday, you still get paid straight time. You're hour, you're hourly.
It would be, it would be.
So, you're straight, so you're getting paid.
It would be.
You're getting paid for that day, you're just not getting paid. Because what you're saying is you didn't get paid. You don't get paid. If you come in on a, you come in to work, you're getting paid, right? Your hour, your standard hourly rate. You're just not getting time and a half.
No, not, I don't think so now. You, oh, I don't think so, because depending on how many hours you take off, how many hours you're off, it depends on, uh.
Well, if you're an hourly employee, if you took a vacation.
You have, we have to have forty hours before we get anything. That's why it was, that's the way it was planned, and, and that right?
Mr. Griffin, are they getting paid time and a half, comp time, for their time over forty, or is it just straight time?
Sure. Straight time over forty?
Explain, explain how their pay works.
That is not inconsistent with the policy if you're getting a straight time over forty. Should be time and a half for time over forty. The, uh.
That works in the situation I was talking about, mainly.
Time as comp time is what, is what.
The town was saying, you know, hey, you're here at two o'clock, you got to work to ten o'clock, we're going to pay you comp time. You've done, you've done pulled your time. You know, it should be time and a half after, even at a regular workout. We're here past, past regular work time. I mean, we've already been here. We think that should be time and a half.
You're correct. But, but you're saying even if that number is below forty hours?
We're, we're getting it at forty hours too. Still having to take comp time.
Mayor, I'd like to say something. Mr. P. and Mr. Garner, thank you for coming forward tonight. Unfortunately, I had to come to this point. Mayor, in efforts of time, I'd like to ask that they have a valid complaint here that this gets looked in by the staff. It concerns me that this is the first that we're hearing of this, and I would ask them, of course, it's not necessary for time, but why hasn't this been addressed prior to this for it to have to come before the council? I, I would personally like to say thank you to the employees for the job that you guys do. I know y'all work long hours and hard hours. I've been out there with you, and I understand, and I, I think you have a valid concern. And I would like that we have it looked into, and I would like to have a report back to the council as soon as possible.
I think it's a good idea, but I, I'm a little confused. I need a clarification. Can, can you walk us through how their pay is worked?
Every hour that is worked by an employee is compensated for. So.
So, if they work, they're getting paid, some type of pay.
They're getting paid. So, if, I believe, if they are to have time off, and they come in, they're still getting paid for those hours' work. They're going to be compensated in one way or another, whether it be comp time, if it's over forty, it's going to be a time and a half with comp time. If they, what Luther was alluding to is, if you have a continuation, if you are currently at work, and something happens while you are on the clock, that is carryover time. So, that is going to be compensated at the time and a half. If he goes home and gets called back in, that's when it may qualify for overtime if he has worked a physical forty for that week. And that is taking FLSA law to its bare bones. And that is taking FLSA law to its bare bones minimum, that you work the physical forty. What, what they are also mentioning though is that if they have a vacation, if, all right, if they have a holiday like Easter and they have to come in and work because we've had a lot of those recently, uh, they happen to have fallen upon holidays, those hours still remain. They get paid for the hours that they worked, but those hours will still remain to their use as holiday, but they are asking to be compensated at time and a half, not at comp time, but time and a half to get overtime because while everyone else was sitting at home enjoying their, their Easter, they're, they're saying, give us something to help compensate for. I believe that's the, is that fairly...
And, and I, I think Travis has got a good point. Y'all could, if you and the manager would do a study and maybe send all of us a kind of update and maybe if you have any suggestions about how I might have that.
I can.
They, they will have something to really look at and study.
Did that help?
Yeah, that, that, that explained it much clearer. Yes, sir. Any, any other questions from the council?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I guess this is called still good evening?
Good morning.
My name is Tony Nixon. I reside at Eight Seater Drive. I'm also the chairman of the East Smithfield Improvement Organization. And, um, I just have something very short and brief just to share with the, uh, the members of the council. Couple of, uh, concerns, uh, that the citizens of Pine Acres and, um, also probably the citizens of Smithfield would have as it pertains to the Smithfield Crossings Project. Um, the new road that was cut through, um, well, back in two thousand and six, when we were first talking about that road and the impact that it has on the residents of Pine Acres, there were several issues that we resolved at that time, one of them being the buffers. So, um, we do have a fifty-foot buffer that is vegetated and we thank the prior council for that. However, the citizens are concerned right now of the safety and security. Um, I understand that the road has not been turned over to the town yet, so there are some issues that, um, cannot be addressed immediately, but, um, I understand that's forthwith, um, coming. So what we would like to, uh, the council to consider is the chain link fencing that would ensure security for those residents, uh, because there is starting to be some foot traffic throughout the neighborhood from the crossings area. So please consider the chain link fencing. Also, um, if you are aware, rural roads in, in and around the United States are probably some of the more heavily traveled roads. So safety is a, is a, a point that we should consider there for our tourists, visitors into Smithfield and also the residents, uh, that board of that project. Um, so we would also ask the council to consider, uh, guard rail that would border that entire, um, area or, uh, some type of chain barrier. Chain barrier would probably be less expensive. The guard rail will probably be a little more expensive, but, um, that would ensure the safety of the vehicle of traffic, um, especially as we get into the, the high-traffic season of Christmas and that sort of thing where you've got a lot of people not knowing where they're going. There's a slight embankment there, um, so, you know, we're certainly concerned with the vehicle of traffic. Um, so guard railing, um, in addition to the chain link fencing, which would tie into the motif of the crossings area. So those are the two concerns that we have, um, as a neighborhood. So we would, um, seriously like the council to consider that in your planning and your budgeting for that crossings area. Thank you.
Paul, is there fencing already in, in...
There's, um, part of, part of the, I think, discussion going back several years and, uh, Ms. Emmler's here to, um, to, to verify this. Part of the discussion was that once the, uh, the contractor is complete with his project, it, not necessarily the funding, uh, closed out, but the contractor complete, um, with his project, because they, they kind of own and possess the site until they're closed out and we can't have a, and it's not part of their contract to put up any kind of fence or anything or, or tree plant a buffer there. So, and I think you mentioned this some months ago, I think the idea is that once that contract is closed out, even if the loan's not closed, or, you know, finished, we can go in there and erect the, um, chain link fence as, um, um, as Mr. Nixon, uh, indicated, which I think is still the plan. And, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that is supposed to be funded out of the contingency from the existing, uh, project funds. Um, I know Mr. Emmler, uh, since his points have been brought up, has, um, explored the idea, is gonna try to get some, maybe some cost of even playing some additional buffer. I think you talked about some Leelyn cypress, that's there. As far as the guard rail that was mentioned, that's really only been in the project for, I have to show you on the, on the wall, but really just that corner where you make that hard corner, you make that hard turn to the right. I believe that's the only part that's in there. Um, and again, as Mr. Nixon, um, um, indicated, that's a pretty expensive stretch there to have guard rail dur- during that whole, or down that entire length of, of roadway. There might be an alternative and I'm sure, um, Mr. Emmler can look into that and see if there's something else that, that will help. But there's also a good bit of, um, distance there from the edge of that road. But, so right now, the plan, you know, and again, it's, it's taken an interesting path in, in certain regards, going back several years, was to erect a chain link fence for the reasons pointed out, to help with the security and safety. And I think Mr. Emmler was also gonna check on maybe there could be some planted tree buffer along with that, maybe in a different place, but, um, somewhere there to really to, uh, and that would also serve to, you know, obviously provide a little bit more buffer. And going back several years, I think they looked at all kinds of different walls and cau, I think they did a sound study. And at the end of the day, it was really based on security and chain link fence was, was the option chosen going back at that time. Is that pretty close, Mr. Emmler?
Thank you. Question, Paul, is those still cypress, those ones that tall, that grow up to about, what, six, eight feet?
Yeah. Leelyn cypress, what's the, what's the height of those? At least that.
The cypress, uh, to give you an example, um, out at the, uh, the interior of West Side, uh, on US seventy, those are Leelyn cypress that are planted adjacent to the Rock Lake. Another tree, probably used several different varieties because it's such a long strip. Um, there's cryptomeria at the Conica, which is, um, if you go down between Allen Welland House and the, uh, the social services complex over there, those are cryptomeria. And another one is giant green arbori, some of them will get up, be dense, provide a real good screen and go up to some high, not just something low, but something high. And probably make some hollies in, foster hollies or Savannah hollies.
So I'm to understand there's gonna be a chain link fence running all the way across there behind this house? Is that what I'm understanding?
Is that right?
Adjacent to the Pine Acres subdivision, years ago, before this project was even conceived, it was when the movie theater was being permitted. And, um, at that time, Arling Guing owned the land where our roadway is constructed. The town council, your predecessors, uh, put in there that number one, there had to be a fifty-foot buffer. At the time we started this project, the fifty-foot, the screen link fence was added as an additional buffer between Pine Acres and the development there. So it was actually part of the original development plan and we just followed through with it with the roadway.
So, yes?
Yes. I don't answer anything simple, do I?
Do we have a timeline when it will be complete?
There are about a half a dozen items on the contractor's punch list. As soon as they close those out and DOT signs off on it, we can close the contractor out on the contract and then he gives the project back to us. At that time's when we can start the fencing project. We can't really, till he gives us the project back, we can't go do it. It's North Carolina law. It's his, his project until he gives it...
As soon as, as soon as he's done, whether we got the finance or not, or whatever, when he's finished grading and getting all the final grades out, we'll go out there and put that fence up in the...
Yes, sir. I'm gonna put a bid package together and we're gonna bid the fence out and we'll get three bids and we'll bring it to the council for your award so you'll know exactly when it's gonna happen.
All right. Any other questions for Paul? Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Is that all the, uh, citizens' comments? Okay, we're gonna move the consent agenda. You got a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Paul, ever say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let's move to business item number one, discussion on residential rate study for electric rates. Ken Griffin, put all down.
Mayor, while Mr. Griffin's making his way down, and he may have a few more comments to add.
Sixty seconds.
I wanted to, um, let you know that, one, this memorandum, it contains really, really two parts. One is the rate study that was sent out to you probably about two weeks ago, and that was a rate study compiled by Electric Cities that compared, um, all of Anakempa, that's the eastern agency towns. Um, it rated them in terms of their actual, um, kilowatt-hour rate. And as you can see from the graph, and we talked about this, um, uh, recently, over the last couple of weeks, that Smithfield rated as the second lowest, uh, residential rate if you're measuring the use of, uh, one thousand kilowatt-hours, uh, over a monthly, um, timeframe. Um, we were second there. We are approximately fourteen to fifteen percent higher than, uh, Duke Energy, but again, um, lower than the other thirty, uh, thirty towns, uh, in the agency. Only one town was lower than us. And, and admittedly, there were, some were very close, a slow graph going up. Um, but I wanted to make sure, as part of the, um, the request by council after a, a citizen, uh, made some comments on behalf of another, uh, resident, that, um, there was a request that a rate study be, be performed and that's what we have, uh, for your use. Also, more recently, I think just a few days ago, um, Ken was able to provide the council with at least a snapshot of a rate comparison on our commercial, and that includes retail residential, or retail, um, high and low retail, uh, industrial and, and various categories in the commercial side. You've got that. Admittedly, I think we need some more work on that. The commercial rates are very, um, they're very difficult because there's usually multiple, sometimes eight to as many as twenty different rates. There's different factors that, uh, that come into play with regard to what you can do with, uh, your own generation and load shedding during certain peak hours that make the comparison a little bit more difficult. But what you've got is at least a beginning point on just comparing the base rates. And the other difficult, difficulty is you've got to try to figure out what the other companies do and what their options are. And, um, that just, um, unfortunately doesn't, doesn't just happen by just getting a raw rate. So we're working on that, trying to give you, maybe the, the answer might be to give you different forms of that comparison and so you feel like you have a really good handle as to where we fit in compared to other, um, municipalities and certainly compared to, um, our largest, um, uh, other provider, uh, Duke Energy in this case. And also I wanted to, as part of this memo, the, on page one forty-eight, um, if you recall, we did have some comments from, um, um, from a resident in town who was speaking on behalf of a, of another user on Blunt Street. And we looked into that account and there was a, um, what appeared to be a high, uh, electric bill, uh, for that residence. And so what we did is we just, we pulled the bill, took a look at that, compared it to other users, and in sum, it appears that the, the house in question, uh, basically is using a lot of power. So it's not so much the rate, because I think our rates are, in comparison, um, are extremely competitive and only, uh, marginally fourteen, fifteen percent higher than Duke Energy. Um, I think the issue with the house in question is really the use, the consumption of power, how much power that house is using. There were some remarks made that the house had been updated and some energy efficiency and that may very well be the case. But this, this, um, actual dwelling was using somewhere between twenty-eight hundred and five thousand kilowatt-hours per month. And that's really, that's a high use for a house that's even three or four times the size of that home. So, again, um, so what we've done is we've contacted the owner and we've offered them, which apparently I think they have done, maybe some years ago, but they have done what we call an energy audit for the house, to go through the home and check, uh, appliances and check, um, everything from light bulbs, to check the HVAC and to check things and make sure they're running properly and give them suggestions they can cut their power usage. We have offered that. I don't know recently if, uh, if that resident's taken us up on it. I know in some time in the past, going back to the last year, eighteen months, I think there was a, a similar audit, um, uh, energy audit that was performed, uh, with the help of Electric Cities. So we're trying to help that resident, uh, with that, but I want to make sure the council understood that, uh, it did appear to be more of a use problem than it did to be a, a rate problem there, but certainly we're sympathetic and we're trying to help, uh, help that customer as much as we can. Ken, do you want to add anything to that?
I can add a couple of things. I think Mr. Sabiston covered it well. You know, it's interesting, of the thirty-two communities, uh, Smithfield is about medium in size, we're number fifteen in size of the thirty-two communities, uh, in terms of number of connections. Uh, we're much larger though in terms of, uh, in terms of electric revenue because of the, the commercial industrial customers we have. Relatively speaking, we have some very large customers and so, uh, we're number eleventh in terms of, uh, revenue, total revenue that we receive. Uh, but despite that, uh, we have, uh, very low rates relative to our other thirty-two, uh, cities. Uh, we are number two, as Mr. Sabiston mentioned, um, typical rate for a thousand kilowatt-hours, typical monthly cost for a thousand kilowatt-hours, uh, including the, uh, the regular monthly charge, that's, uh, the base fee that's also calculated in there. Uh, we're about a hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, Duke Power is a hundred and eight dollars and, uh, most, all the municipalities except one is higher than us. Part of the reason for that is, I think, you, the council and the town manager have worked hard over the years to keep costs down, uh, in utilities, especially electric. Um, and, uh, you've had a rate decrease about two years ago. And so, uh, as a result, we have moved down the scale in terms of being one of the, the least expensive, uh, utilities of, of our, of our counterparts. Mr. Sabiston mentioned earlier that we operate with only about a fifteen percent margin. In other words, other than purchased power cost, all of our costs only are about fifteen percent of the budget. That's on the extreme, extreme low side when you look nationally. Uh, you'd have, utilities will range anywhere from fifteen to forty percent typically. Some will range higher than forty percent, some will range, uh, uh, up to sixty percent. We are on the extreme low side in that our costs, other than purchased power, only constitutes fifteen percent. So it's a very lean operation and you all and the town manager have brought that apart over the years, um, and that's made that's possible. That's why that comparison shows well. Uh, another number to give you a sense of things is our, um, our rate is, uh, uh, one point two oh seven cents per kilowatt-hour. Uh, that rate is below the national average. The national average is point one three oh one cents, so we are below the national average as well. Mr. Sabiston has talked with you about ongoing negotiations with Duke Energy Progress. Those negotiations are, are going very well. Um, I do see a real win-win. They are very interested in negotiating. Uh, we obviously have something that's very important to us that we need to succeed on. Uh, our partial ownership in those nuclear plants is really what's killing us and our other thirty-one municipalities in eastern North Carolina. Uh, Duke does have some things that, uh, this negotiation will help with them significantly. So I am optimistic that we will see a deal. We will see a deal in the next, uh, we should know about it in the next few months and we should know about it for sure in the next year. And that can make a very significant difference. And, uh, I would recommend that in anticipation of that, when we, we start to know what that number is, that we would do a comprehensive, uh, cost of service study and a, and a rate study, uh, to look at, um, how the rates can be reduced and make sure that our rates are fairly reduced and are fair for all of our different classes of users. Mr. Sabiston is right, the, uh, the homeowner that, uh, did have the very high bill, that is, that is an exceptionally large amount of electricity, uh, for a home that size, for a homeowner of any size. We did offer, uh, um, an energy efficiency audit, a free audit for that. We have not had a positive response yet, but I'm hoping that they will, uh, decide to do that and we'll gladly provide that and we think we probably can find what the sources of the problems are, why their, why their bill is so high, why their consumption is so high.
Can we check the meter on that house?
Yeah, the meter, the meter, the meter's fine.
Ken, you mentioned the fourteen percent resi, that, just for clarification, that's residential. Um, based on the information you've found so far, what, where are we at with our commercial customers and our industrial customers on the comparison of the...
Well, as I said to you, we are, we are, we are higher, uh, higher than, than Duke Energy Progress for our commercial customers, with the exception though of, a very important exception. Uh, in working with Electric Cities, we do offer a load shedding program that if you sign up for that and you shed your load upon notification of a peak event. That saves Electric Cities dramatically, uh, and that saves us dramatically, and that savings is passed on to the, uh, to the, to the customer, in this case, the large industry. savings is passed on to the customer, in this case, the large industry. And, for instance, for the example that I ran for you, which was a large user, a very high demand user, the rate would be, they would be paying about 62 percent of what they would be paying with Duke Energy Progress, so their bill would be substantially less. And we have a number of industrial customers that have signed up and utilized that program very effectively. Duke Energy Progress does not offer that program. We do offer that program through Electric Cities, and it's a very good program, it really does help other large users. You have to make the investment, though, as a large user, to have that standby power, to have the generator power. And of course, you're always better off to have that come on automatically, so you don't have to rely on getting that message and sending somebody out to switch your generators on. And some of our industrial customers, large users, have done that, and they do it extremely effectively, and they really keep their bill down as a result.
Ken, have you been out to Jerry G. Williams and Son Lumber Company?
Yes, I've met with Jerry. Jerry had an issue in terms of, recently, in terms of his load not being shed.
You met with Mark?
Pardon?
You met with Mark?
With Mark, yes, sir.
Okay, good, because I talked to him several times, and tell me why, he is a, the company is a town customer, why do they have to provide their own electrical support when they have problems? Why doesn't the town service them?
Well, it's typical for most electric utilities in the country, when you get to a certain size, the rates are usually calculated and determined, and the rules are such that the customers of large size do provide their own equipment. That's usually their desire to do such. It's very, very typical. So we operate like any other electric utility in that regard.
Was Mark satisfied with your meeting, as far as you know?
You know, he was satisfied. I'll tell you, I think the one thing I think he was disappointed was, he thought maybe our margin was larger. He remembered a similar discussion that we had, that he had with the previous superintendent two, three years ago, and the margin was higher, you know, in the 20 to 30 percent range, and that's what he remembered. So he was surprised when I told him it was only 15 percent. That covers all of our non-purchased power costs. It was considerably higher before, and as I said, you, the council, and the town manager, through your budget actions and through your, the rate decrease you had two years ago, you've brought those down. That's why that number is as low as it is, and one of the lowest in the country.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the manager a question if it's appropriate. Just, are we still planning to have a public, to talk more about the power, have a presentation for the citizens to address the transfers and also the rates and such?
There's no meeting scheduled to that effect, and that's something we need to bring up tonight to schedule that. So, I mean, you know we have the budget hearing on Wednesday week, and I think, I know we talked earlier about having maybe another budget meeting before that budget hearing as early as this week, so I just need some coordination, some dates that work with council to have that kind of meeting.
I think Ken needs to finish on the wholesale industrial side. You're not finished with your rate study yet, are you?
When he gets his time...
When he gets that done, then yeah, we'll do it, because that's a big part of our purchase.
Yeah, I think, as Ken mentioned too, I think, you know, we can talk more about it, you know, for this year, and certainly going forward in the next fiscal year, talk about that. I think, you know, I think you're going to find that, you know, really, with the industrial and commercial rates, it's going to be, it's going to be something of a gamble to try and just pick one and lower that or whatever, because as Ken said, you know, we've got a good customer base on that side, and a little bit too much, not enough, can really have an adverse impact. The residential rate's a little bit more predictable, and I know, I know I've said many times, and, you know, as much as we all want to lower the rate as soon as possible, you know, what Ken introduced was, you know, maybe a little bit more, you know, get some outside help to do a rate study. And we may have to forecast a little bit, what do we expect this asset purchase to bring? And there are some numbers we can use and plug in along those lines and have some, I think, some good options, and then when it is finalized, we can hopefully plug in one of those, and I hope have a substantial rate reduction that would impact both residential, which we have reduced lately, but also our commercial industrial base, at the time, and do it the right way, so it's fair to everyone, we can try to be a little bit more business-friendly, and try to make it work and be able to afford it. I think we'll have some good news, but, I mean, I think it's a great effort to try and do that. You know, I think it'd be tough, you know, it's one thing to talk about, you know, in terms of transfer, and just make sure everybody understands the number is clear, I think that's a great idea, but in terms of the actual rate adjustment, I think it's going to be, it's going to be a struggle. But, you know, we can do one mid-year too, so it's not like if we don't do one now, we can't do it for a year. Not usually the practice, but I just think with everything that's coming up with this opportunity, we have a huge opportunity to do a good job by the end of this calendar year or early next year, you know, about this time.
And the other thing that Ken mentioned, and I appreciate, is the interest in customers that have excessive use or things. I know that there's even phone calls that go out if somebody at the company, they see an excess of use, maybe water or so, but is that something that we can open up to other citizens? Are we prepared staff to...
Absolutely. In fact, it's promoted, it's on our website. When customers come in and have high bills, Elaine, I mean, she sets them up if they're so inclined, sometimes, and they usually, they send these orders from Electric Cities typically, but they're pretty good, do a pretty good job, quick turnaround, and we push that program, anyone who's interested, there's a way to link into it and contact us. It's a pretty common occurrence, and, you know, again, the ones that have a high bill, I mean, they look at them every day, they're pretty sure something's not right, and there's something, and again, we check the meter, once we're past that, they're like, well, there's got to be some efficiency issues there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Have a personal discussion of residential rate study. Ken, I believe you're going to come and talk about the statement of work for NextGrid, the smart grid pilot.
Mr. Scott's question is quite appropriate. The ideal, the ideal way to notice extreme consumption, unusual consumption, is with the smart grid, and you can have a smart grid for both water and electric, and that way we can notify the customer immediately if the usage jumps, and that does happen with the leak or break. And furthermore, when you have the smart grid fully installed, the customer would have access as well, and they can log in from their home, they can log in remotely and see their account, and they can see exactly what their consumption is. They can know what's happening in their house when they're not there, when they're away from their home. And so, you know, with that, you all have been wise in terms of having interest in moving forward with the smart grid. I know the town manager has worked hard with Electric Cities to explore those options. We believe that it is a very smart way to go. We believe that we can operate more efficiently, we can provide better customer service, we believe we can produce bills, and handle customer accounts more efficiently, more cost efficiently than we do now. We believe we can handle outages much more efficiently, with more knowledge and more power and more quickly, more responsive to our customers than we do now, and in general, we believe there's excellent operational savings in terms of having a smart grid, both for electric and water. We've worked closely with Electric Cities over the last couple of years. It's taken a little longer than I think we all wish. Electric Cities did, a couple of months ago, come out with recommendations in terms of software and vendors and approaches that they thought would work well. The one approach they do recommend is a company named NextGrid out of Virginia, out of central Virginia, and a number of electric municipalities like ourselves in North Carolina have either installed or are installing pilot programs and full installations using the NextGrid system. Town manager and myself and the finance director visited such an installation in Kinston, were impressed with it. We believe the best way, though, to, before you make that commitment to a very large expenditure, several million dollars, that you actually see how these systems work. And so we'd like to move ahead on a very small scale with a pilot study. So we've talked to NextGrid and seen what the cost would be to implement a minor program that would allow us and allow you, you can even be a participant if you would like to be one of the homes, whereby we would try out the smart grid program, both for water and electric. Forty-five electric meters, five of which would have automatic disconnects, and five water meters. And the price the NextGrid has proposed is a very fair price, given the cost of these services, a little more than $12,000. It has been budgeted, it was planned for in the budget that you developed last year, and it is now time where we can pull the trigger and try that trial. So I recommend that we do that. I think it's a very fair proposal in terms of all they're providing, in terms of hardware, software, and expertise. So I ask your authorization to allow the town manager to sign, to execute a statement of work.
I'll make a motion that we approve the authorization to execute the statement of work with NextGrid.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
I'd like to, a discussion on that real quick. I understand the smart grid process and how it works. My concern is, that in fact, the, you know, I feel like it's a want versus a need. I understand it eliminates the meter reader, but I would like for us to prioritize our spending and look on decreasing the rates rather than spend money to improve the system. I understand it's a want versus a need. That's just my only opposition to it, however, I don't have a problem with us doing it as a pilot program. If you take 12,242, apparently that's pretty expensive per meter, it looks like, so what would the overall cost be, do you think? I think you just mentioned it, it's about 7 million?
I don't believe that's, I don't believe that's, we've seen estimates in the 2 to 3 million dollar range, if I recall. We are talking with other vendors as well, and may recommend to you another pilot to get a comparison. Yes, these systems are expensive, but they, we've done the cost comparisons, what it would, how it pays for itself, it pays for itself in the order of about five or six years, and then after that, you come out ahead of the situation in terms of having the smart grid in place. You can operate more, more cost efficiently, you can provide customer service and billing much more efficiently, cost efficiently in particular, and so we do recommend in the long term, it's a very good purchase, and it has relatively good payback.
Ken, the last town you worked at, didn't they put one in?
I've installed three smart grid for water systems, very effectively, did the first one back in the early 90s, and have done two more since then, and they've worked extremely well. Customers have been very pleased, staff very pleased, really helped our, really helped our efficiency, went from three people handling the customer billing down to one, so it's a great, great advance. And I think the electric smart grids are even more powerful.
Any other questions for Ken? Well, now, we've got a motion, a second on the floor, all discussions through, all in favors. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Let's have a show of hands, all in favor say aye, raise your hand. All right, show of hands, who's opposed? It's four to three. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay, I need an update discussion on Joseph B. George Fund.
Mayor, Councilman. I've written some history here for you with regards to the JP George Fund, for those that may not be familiar with it. Just in brief, it started out some 14 years ago with 20-plus thousand dollars being donated to the town to be used for appearance enhancement for the town, and the town governs that money. It is supposed to be money spent, excuse me, interest earned on the money is what the budget should be each year for expenditures for appearance. I, shortly after coming with the town, I discovered that the fund was in the hole to the town, some $9,000. There ought to be adjustments made within that fund, as best I can tell, and I've got years of history to look at, when expenses were incurred, taxes are charged, it looks to me as if an accounting entry was done to charge those taxes back to the fund. In my opinion, that shouldn't happen because these monies, as I just discovered, do qualify for tax reimbursement, just like the rest of the town expenditures. So after making those adjustments in the coming days, the fund will owe the town some I've met on a couple of instances with Bob Worsham, the previous appearance committee president, and even more recently with Mr. Worsham and Mr. George. They're both here tonight. I think we had very beneficial meetings as to how to handle the debt that the fund owes the town, but we wanted to present this to you to have your input. We have narrowed the recommendations down to two, as listed on the backside of the write-up. The first is to limit or restrict spending on the fund until the monies in the fund have earned enough to pay the town back. The second is, is, excuse me, the second alternative is to just forego spending this year and forgive the balance of the debt, which would be some $3,700. Mr. George and Mr. Worsham are good with either scenario, but they wanted both presented to the board to give the board a chance to give some input.
But you don't want to forgive the full $6,895 and 37 cents?
That is not our recommendation in either case, because we've already pulled off the $3,100 this year. They don't anticipate using that monies this year. They were just kind of in limbo, not knowing what to do, but the year has already passed. It's not likely, I think, that there will be any spending this year, so the $3,100 earned this year will go to reduce the case in either scenario.
So I'm going to understand that the $3,150 that they have now, they won't be able to spend this fiscal year. They've agreed to let you take that as a credit toward this money that staff made a mistake in charging them or giving them more than they were supposed to, is that my understanding?
If I understood you correctly, yes, sir.
Is that right?
So Bobby, you, you looked at the numbers and the, more money was dispersed than should have been?
Yeah, I went through 10 years worth of history, and this problem started about this pre-grid, and it started about three years ago. And with the good reg payment, we determined that this was not a lawful property by its department. We, the Appearance Commission, elected not to spend the earned income this year until we resolve the budget issue. It's too late for us to spend it in this fiscal year anyway, because I think all appearance orders have been issued by the end of last month, so there's no way we could spend that earned income that was drawn off this year. So we voted to say that the 31, I think it's going to be slightly different, Greg, because there was the four applications in the Smithfield payroll that's required by the agreement, I think it's like about $50 or something like that, that will get charged to that amount of $3,100, and we're willing to say, go ahead and take it against the difference of 1,600, and it still leaves about 3750, I think this was the balance on the...
That's correct.
So, the Appearance Commission did take a vote after these two options. The motion you asked was to vote in favor, voted for option number two, because they felt this was, do not feel it was their issue to cover, since it was a pound by its staff issue.
Ken, you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve recommendation number two to forego spending this fiscal year, have the town forgive the balance of 374537, resume spending fiscal year 15 at the 3150 investment income.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Question carries. Okay, item number four, update discussion on online bill pay for utility collections.
Wanted to bring the board up to date with where we are with online bill pay. Wanted to bring the board up to date with where we are with online bill pay. I believe it's been an interest of the board to have online bill pay available to customers for quite some time. We were exploring new software. That deal fell through because that software company couldn't perform for us. And so that farther delayed the implementation of any online bill pay. I have approached the software company that we have been doing business with for some time. It is available through them if we upgrade our software. To upgrade the software, it's probably still some six-plus months away as we look at that alternative. And so I have also explored other options to having online bill pay. The best possible option is to go with the company that we currently have our software through. That would kind of be the Cadillac plan, if you will. Customers could look at prior payment history. They could look at usage history online. They could post payments. It would be real time. There would be nothing much for staff to do after the payment was made except to record it in our general ledger. Everything would kind of feed over automatically. That's the ideal scenario for us. A less favorable scenario, but yet one that's an option, is where we can give them a basic online bill pay. They simply go to our website, click on the bill pay button. They have to have their account number. They have to know how much is due because it will tell them nothing. But they can make a payment. We get a report of that payment. It then comes to us and we post it a second time in-house. Selma is using this particular application. It is an option for us if you want bill pay immediately. I can actually have this probably up and running within 30 minutes. On the other hand, would be tied into a contract for about three years. Outside of that option, at this point, is just to wait until we get our software upgraded.
Greg, obviously, if a customer pays online, they're going to have to pay something else in cash.
Yes.
They're going to pay with a credit card, I would guess.
Credit or debit card.
So my memory is that we're being charged to process credit cards, the city is.
Everyone that takes credit cards gets charged for it.
That's correct. And then you say here, there is a one-time setup charge per customer?
No.
One-time setup charge for the city, and then there's a charge per transaction. My question is, we're going to pay how much per transaction? Is that a quarter? Is it 10 cents?
No. The one company that I spoke to is estimated to be around $2.50 per transaction. Now, the town can choose to absorb that cost or pass that cost on to the customer.
Well, one of the questions I have, and one of the conversations we've had in the past, is that it costs us to accept a credit card. We should be considering charging whatever... At least what it costs us to process that for that. Now you're talking about another $2.50. So my original point was, we need to be charging customers to use a credit card fee for the credit card.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Harris, if we go to this particular online bill pay, the customer... The only charge would be that transaction charge. The town would not then get an additional bill for the credit card transaction.
And the customer would pay this transaction charge.
If you decide that, if the council decide to pass it on to the customer.
So you're saying if a person that wants to pay with their credit card online, they're going to pay roughly approximately $2.50 for that transaction? If they're paying, say, an $80,000 bill for their power plant or their sawmill, they're not... We're not going to pay that 2% or 3% difference?
That's correct. It's more in some cases, the company is... Because it's a flat fee per customer.
But if they walk in here, it's going to... We're going to have to pay that 2% or 3% as we're currently paying now.
The percentage that we're paying varies depending on the type of card. It's not the same for everyone as the per-transaction cost is. The per-transaction cost could care less about the type of card.
It's probably run about 1.8% or 2.2%. Depends on the card, that kind of thing. But they are not charging... If you walk in for a credit card and pay your bill, the town is losing roughly 2% every time you do it, and it's mistaken. I would not do it.
But this plan here is only going to cost us $2.50 basically?
Yeah, but if...
Well, that's the software company charging a flat fee of $2.50 for processing, but you're still going to eat the credit card fee. I've talked to Greg and Paul about, we need to charge a credit card fee back to users. But right now, we're not doing that, which is a slightly different issue.
They're basing the cost per transaction based on the average utility bill. Someone paying an $80,000 bill is not the average.
But you only speaking of... This is just one vendor you're talking about.
I've spoken to one that can do this immediately for us. We met with a vendor just last week that is checking now to see if they can integrate with the software that we currently have. But we haven't heard back from them. We have sent them files, electronic files of what we have, and we're waiting to hear. I think my question is, how soon do you want this?
We're not the first town to plow this field, so there are ideas on how to handle this. Why can't you just bring us some proposals?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that's all you're seeking, right? It's to get proposals. So bring us back some proposals. Then we can look at them. We can either say yea or nay, or go back out and support some more.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we grant the finance director the authority to bring us some proposals from third-party vendors.
Second.
All in favors? Any discussion? All in favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've got two items that have been added to our agenda. Item number five, consideration to appoint a member of council to the Upper Coastal Plain Area Rural Planning Organization, Transport Advisory Committee. Any motions to make to approve a council member to this committee?
Make a motion to recommend Councilman Charles Williams.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye.
I assume you're willing to serve.
I am.
Proud of you.
He's all over the world.
All right. Item number six, discussion on changes to the new hire policy.
Mayor, this item came up at the budget session last week, and there's some... There's a brief memo in your packet. If I can find that. It's like it's right... It's right before the green sheet in there. Basically, Mayor, as you may recall, there was a motion passed by the council in July of 2013. They essentially required approval for any and all new hires or replacement hires, even if those employees had been budgeted and approved by council in the present budget year and was an existing staff position. Some of the concerns with that came up last week about the... Some of the delays and some of the adverse impacts that's had on some of the hiring process. Different areas, police departments had a few issues, and then also in some of the part-time help in the Parks and Rec and the Shrek. And basically filling a position where there are available replacements. Somebody quits for whatever reason and trying to fill it with a new part-time position, typically teachers, swimming or aerobics teachers. And with the process, it takes a little bit longer to get that approval, and that means there's some down-class time, and it's been difficult in certain circumstances to fill those classes. On the police side, sometimes we have extremely qualified candidates. We have a resignation or otherwise a departure in the police department. We have... Usually, there's a pool of candidates that have already gone through the system, and they can interview and have somebody pretty quick ready to make them an offer. But with the delay, depending on when the opening comes up, there can be a, you know, anywhere from a week to three-week delay. And given the quality of some of those candidates, when that happens, there have been occasions where we've lost those candidates because they decided not to wait and take a job with another jurisdiction. Now, obviously, in your more standard case where, you know, you're advertising, it's going to take a while, it's a new opening, you know, the inconvenience is not as big a factor. But there are times when that... When it does occur, and we have experienced that over the last year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to allow the town manager to approve the hiring of replacement staff for previously approved and budgeted positions. And upon the hiring of the new replacement employees, the town manager department here will report the new replacement hire to the council.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to add something to your motion, that the new hire also be placed in the consent agenda at the next council meeting, just so it'll be part of the formal record. Would you accept that friendly amendment?
Sure.
I've got a substitute motion or attachment. You okay with that? Got a second? All in favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Councilmember's comments. I'm going to take over this one.
We've got another item.
I thought we took off number seven.
No, we added it.
Oh, update on...
I'm looking for the mayor's.
I have no update.
Item number seven was to discuss the pay scandal.
Yes. I was waiting for the mayor to acknowledge me.
So sorry. I can't remon... I can't remon handwriting. I wrote down pay raises. Obviously, that's not it, but anyway.
I did want to address, for the benefit of the citizens and also fellow council members, what has been for many, many... Too many years now, the pay raise scandal in Smithfield. And I wanted to report the things we know to this point and what's going on at this point. What we have discovered is there were a number of irregularities, not only the unauthorized pay raises, but there was... And we knew about the unauthorized vacation payouts, unauthorized dry cleaning, unauthorized cashing in of comp time. And it looks like the numbers on the unauthorized expenditures exceed $200,000. Getting some of this information and talking about it, we're limited by pending agreements and pending lawsuits. There is a pending lawsuit against the town. Former town manager Eric Williams has sued the town. He also sued the former town clerk as a party in that lawsuit. That lawsuit is pending and proceeding. The town is represented by town attorney Bob Spence and also the law firm of Warden Smith. Mr. Williams is represented by Jack Nichols out of Raleigh. And former town clerk is represented by Mr. Jaco Hale, local attorney here in Smithfield. The pleadings are... I thought the pleadings were closed. Deposition was taken last week of the former town clerk. There are pending depositions now of the former mayor and the former finance director. I understand there may be other depositions taken. It was either last week or this week that Ms. Godwin did file a cross-claim against the town of Smithfield, seeking to be reimbursed for any and all attorney's fees she incurs in fighting this lawsuit. I hope that we will be able to report more to the citizens. I think this is an important issue. There is not a week that goes by that I'm not asked by at least one person. There is not a week that goes by when great dismay is expressed that we are not getting to the bottom of this and giving out information. So I did want to just make that brief report, and hopefully that we will know more as lawsuit goes forward. And as lawsuit goes forward, I think we'll be able to share more information with the town. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember's comments. We're talking about having a couple of days from now, a short, extra budget session. Can we come up with a date that we can all make that?
Talking with the other councilmen, as you asked me to prior to the meeting, I asked it. You mentioned Tuesday, Monday, or Thursday. I think, and you guys speak... I think Thursday this week would probably be better.
I can't make it this Thursday.
I'm out of town. I might be back, but I doubt it. I'm going to Atlanta, coming back the same day. It's a long day.
Do we have to have it before the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, it needs to be.
And it needs to be sufficiently before the public hearing, if there are any changes to recommended budget?
They can put it in there.
So what about Monday?
How about Monday?
Do you have Monday?
I have an issue with Monday, but I'll see what I can do.
How's Monday look for everybody else?
I may continue to be here, it just depends on...
Does any particular time would be easier for you? We say a little later or something?
What time are you going to set?
Normally, we'd be meeting at 6:00.
You can tell me to 6:00. I may be a touch late.
All right.
I mean, it may be 30 minutes or so. I'll see what I can do.
Okay.
Do we need to do it a little later? Do you do 6:30?
No, we'll start at 6:00, man, just to save face for the rest of the council. I'll just be a little late. That's fine. I press the easy button.
We won't talk about you while you're not there. Okay.
I'm sure that's going to happen soon.
All right, that's...
I didn't question about that.
June 29th, which is a Monday, 6:00 PM here at the town hall for budget meeting. June 29th. Does any council member also have a comment or make any comment?
I just went quick, I was late. But I did want to just say thank you to Greg for including these graphs in on our monthly reports as far as where we stand today, as far as that's one thing that I'd ask. For me, it gives a good idea, just a quick snapshot of where we are in time, and they look great, and I appreciate you doing that.
Greg, I don't know who you hired to help you, but I don't know who you hired. Town manager?
Mayor, just briefly summarize the report. Just a couple of quick updates. The appointment to the RPO for Mr. Williams, that's an important appointment. I know provided in my report last week that there's been some quick movement on a possibility of getting some funding for the Boca Derry Road. As you recall, you know, that was built several years ago, and there's been a plan with DOT. In fact, it is a tip project meant to be built out, but not till like 2025 or 2030, way down the road. Recently, it has become an opportunity, perhaps, that we could fund that extension going from about the corner, going through the open property, and connecting up with the Ava Gardner roadway that ends there, kind of near the Walmart intersection there. So that really is, I mean, literally, that's moving that project forward, probably 15 years or so as an opportunity. So the appointment will help that. We've actually got in the process, the way these things move through the local RPO, which is basically a subcommittee that gives recommended DOT commitments to DOT. It's moved through the technical, which is a staff-level process, with really the highest point rating it can. The next step, coming up pretty soon, is another joint meeting with that group and the elected official group, another advisory committee that Mr. Williams will be able to attend now. That will come up, and that will be the final point rating. And we understand that if it receives enough points, it will have a pretty good chance of then being picked up by actually NC DOT as a project, possibly as early as the 2016, 2017 budget year. So again, a lot of things have to happen. I mean, obviously, there's got to be acquisition of property, some things that will take some time. But the primary reason it's kind of moved up as it has is because it was in a near-ready status, unlike many other projects that it was competing with. The preliminary and... Or preliminary design was completed, and you know, of course, they'll have to change that or alter it into a final design. It wants the properties acquired, they have actually a piece of land to work with. But it was in a more of a project-ready status than several other competing projects. So that's a good break for the town, and so we're going to keep working on that, and hopefully we'll have some more news for you in the next week or so about where that project stands. Also, Mayor, just briefly, the West Side Highway 70 beautification project, moving forward with that to the extent that we can... forward with that to extent that we can, working on the detailed plan for that, and also trying to work the project and talk to in person and make contact with some of the owners of the property out there to work through the plan so that it meets their interests and that they understand what the plan includes and what it involves with regard to the beautification and the right-of-way improvements there, so that there are no surprises, and that we get some good feedback from those landowners. So we're going to keep working on that. And we've got several contacts already set up that will happen in the near future. And finally, Mayor, with the crossings, the plane staff is prepared to send out the second notice the end of this week, either tomorrow or the next day. That's going to go out, that notice to the property owners about the road name change. And also, we're moving forward to try to get the project closed, as we discussed earlier with the contractor, and also moving to get the financing to the next level, where we can close that up and hopefully wrap up that project here in the next sixty days, if that's possible. And that's all I have.
All right. Any questions for the town manager? We've got a closed session on here, but I don't think we need to go into it unless someone has something to take about. I think that's been moved off of there.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Wait, let's have some discussion on it if we can.
We should be really adjourned.
All in favors.
We've done it with everything else.
All in favors, say aye.
Glad you enjoyed it.
Yeah.